Okay.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order for surprise from lunch.
The United States of America is a republic of which states, one nation, under God, in which law, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, everyone? This is Mrs. Fisher. Is right over there. Right, this is for you.
Hi, 43.
Oh. Okay. You're ready?
Hi, I'd like to take this moment to welcome you on behalf of the staff and students of North East Elementary School. Welcome to our school. We're delighted to have you and glad that you're part of more of our community. Just a couple reminders that the access are located here. And we also have the restroom, it's right outside the door. There is one restroom right outside if you need to use the facilities. And again, welcome on behalf of ladies.
Thank you very much, thank you for having us. Move on to item 2.0, awards, recognitions, and presentations. Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. Skinner Road School has been very active, and active as the offer of the word here. They have received two awards. The first one being the Let's Move Act of Schools Recognition. We do have another school that has received that, who we'll honor at our next meeting as well. This is, I don't know why, oh, I'll read this. In recognition of achieving the 2014 Let's Move Act of School Award by putting children on the path to a healthy future, giving parents helpful information and fostering environments that support healthy choices, providing healthier foods in our schools, ensuring that every family has access to healthy, affordable food, and helping kids become more physically active. And we're very, very proud of Skinner Road School and Skinner Road School family, and I think that's also a word that describes Skinner Road very, very well, is their family, and they are taking care of everyone. The second award, and we'll present these momentarily, is the Bronze Award from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. The Alliance for a Healthier Generation is a cooperation or collaboration between the William Johnson Foundation, the American Heart Association, and First Lady Obama's Healthy Let's Get Moving activity. And to get you, there are bronze, silver, and gold awards. There are a few schools in the state of Connecticut that have received a bronze award. There's only one that has received a silver award, and I know that Skinner Road is already working on that to become the second school in the state to receive a silver award. That other award was approximately eight years ago. They must show improvement in meeting criteria in seven different areas. Those seven areas are policy and systems, school meals, competitive food and beverages, health education, employee wellness, physical education, and student wellness. And we're quite delighted to present both of these awards to Skinner Road School. And who will be accepting those? Mrs. Simon, are you coming up for those? All right, excellent, thank you. Please do. We always appreciate Skinner Road's done a great job with their health and wellness program through the years, so we are very proud of them. Item 2.2 is a report on Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. We have several presenters this evening. As you know, we are still in the middle of the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium assessments. And we have one teacher, Mrs. Ross, who's going to speak. We have our assessment coordinator, Mrs. Vigetjater, and Mrs. Simon. And Mrs. Simon's going to give the school perspective, so I would invite you to come forward. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present an update to all of you. I'm thankful also to Mrs. Ross, who's here this evening, Mrs. Simon. We may be expecting a student as well to get a student perspective. A lot of people, other than those that are sitting here, obviously have been working on implementing our stack. So we're thankful to all the teachers and all the test administrators in our district. So in the update, we have a shortish, and probably three is possible with each one, so that we can hear more if our student does come in later. We want to present some national and state statistics for you, what we're doing in Vermont, and how things are moving along, what measures we've taken to be ready for the ESPEC testing, and of course, perspectives from different key players, and some survey results that are available to us to date. Some students have not completed the test, so once they're finished, we would have more of a robust sample of results. And then what next steps they would be working on. So as far as the national and state statistics, you know, you could say that over too many students have actually started and completed at least one full length ELA math test. In Connecticut, about 398,000 students have started, and a little bit less than that have actually completed the test. And that's because the numbers are usually different that way because of the long window and the ability to pause a test and come back to it and finish the test. So in grade three, then, we have 77% of our students who have completed testing. We have some that have to finish in the east, I believe, this testing may begin tomorrow. Grade four, 95%, grade five, 63% have completed the ELA while 95% have actually completed the math test. And then 100% of our grade six students have completed testing at the CMS. Other grade levels are varying degrees of starting and completion. Our windows run likely June 6th. They've actually extended one week into June for any of the makeups that might happen, you know, for our students. So we're happy for that extension, although we expect in Vermont to be completed with all testing within the time that's available for us. So we have, we've been doing plenty of work to make us ready, and one of them, obviously, is a practice that our students have been receiving, not just with the pilot testing that we implemented last year, which was great. All of our schools participated, perhaps not every student, because we had the option of testing 50% of our students. And this is at Skinner Road School. Mrs. Simon shared this photograph of students working on their Chromebooks, some on their laptops and PCs. So it was a great way to begin with our practice, because it allowed us to see what kinds of problems we might run into with connectivity, et cetera. So we were happy to have had that chance to practice. And it gave administrators and teachers a chance to develop a very nice and comprehensive calendar for testing. I just, that was just a sample of our APOL calendar. We know at every building which day and who's being tested, in which grade level, and at what times. And our IT staff is aware of the schedule, obviously, and they are always prepared and ready to run to whichever school that runs into an issue with any of the technology. And if it's not the technology and it's the ESPEC website, then people call, we have all of our cell numbers, and people call, like the make, at central office, they call Darlene, and we quickly get on site and then try to troubleshoot to see if a student is missing on the list, on the roster. So we are, we feel, you know, it's working well. And daily, though, we do have some issues that we could be troubleshooting. So to prepare our teachers and our staff and our test administrators, we've done quite a bit, quite a bit of work, starting, obviously, last year, but then learning more about the Common Core and how it connects to the ESPEC testing. So early in the year, Mr. Tester, Mr. Garcia, and myself did some work with all of our elementary school teachers, our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, as well as other teachers who attended, just to be prepared for the following year's operational test. So we gave them an idea of what the test looks like and how it actually connects to what they will be doing in the classroom. In addition, we met with special ed teachers, building administrators, and regular ed teachers to talk about accommodations, because it's very, very different this year. It's not just for the special ed students that we can provide some very nice accommodations, it's also for our regular ed students. We got a call the other day saying could we test a student in a separate setting, only because there's a lot, you know, the student gets very distracted. So this is not a special ed student, it's a regular ed student, but the teacher, knowing how the student does behavior class and how they would best succeed on the ESPEC testing, opted to have them tested in a different location. So these are types of accommodations that are available with our stack, which is different now, because this is from a smaller population, it might be the special ed population, we're now looking at the general population and what each of our students will need in order to be successful. Then we looked at working with our school test coordinators, we assigned building principals, chose school test coordinators in their building, as well as test administrators, Mrs. Ross gave the test administrator at Main Street School, and we have test administrators throughout every school building in Vermont, two to three people who've been identified and trained. And along with them stepping up to the plate and saying that they would be a test administrator or a school test coordinator, they've got a nice ESPEC manual, which they could read. Of course, they could read it online, a test administrator's manual, which is often updated. And we also receive field test updates from the State Department of Education pretty much every day, the beginning, and now it's sort of filtered down to about two to three times a week. We get an update with the changes, with pitfalls to watch out for, and the fact that we are getting an extension, and how to appeal a case. For example, I know that, you know, we, you're not sure if it's a test breach, if a student clicks okay to do a test that they're not testing at the moment, but a different test for a later time. And as long as we exit out and have the student sign on the right test, we should be okay. So those are small things that happen throughout the district, but we're able to kind of call it in and ask, and then make sure that they do the right thing, so we are in compliance. So what I wanted to do is turn her, to share some of her data from Skinner Road School and how she's prepared her building.
And the manual, for anyone who would like to read, it is 52 pages long, and we're more than happy to share with anyone who has the desire. At SRS, we scheduled the students to take the test two weeks prior to vacation, and that worked out really nicely. Our students who were in school finished the test right before vacation, and we were able to do makeups after we came back from vacation. So I'm pleased to say we are completely 100% done with our testing at SRS. Every day, we'd get a code, and we would green whatever, and the kids would wait anxiously for the code so that they could type it in. It was really interesting within the students when we got feedback. One of the things that they mentioned was it took so long to log on. Log on took about two minutes, because we had to get the code, give them the code, and then we went around making sure everyone was all set up, and then I'd have to approve them. To them, it shows what digital age they live in, because that seemed like a really long time for them. Our students did prepare by practicing the CMT or the ESPEC testing weeks prior to taking the test, and many of the students said that the practice test was actually harder than the test that they took, the actual test. We were really blown away, myself and my two reading teachers, who worked within the three classrooms that were taking the test at the time. So why we were able to go through so quickly is there were three of us in three different rooms, either in the computer lab or in Chromebooks in two of the other rooms. So we went through rather quickly. The first day, after about 45 minutes, we gave students the option of stopping at that point or moving on. And we were totally blown away, because our students did not unstop testing, they asked to continue. I did, after about an hour and a half, said okay, enough is enough. And all of them, at that point, did finish, said can we go back and finish later, which blew me away. And our students, some of them it may have taken two hours, it may have taken two and a half hours in many different sessions, but they did not want to stop until they finished. And that was really important to some of our students, who in the past at the CMT, we'd stop when the time was called, and that really bothered them, and I really wasn't unaware of that. Our students, I did come up with a survey, and our students gave us feedback, which really, three quarters of the students, if not more, really enjoyed taking the tests on the computer. They did ask for earbuds in third grade, so we went out and got the earbuds. And now every student has their own set of earbuds that they get passed year to year, the 99 cents, if anyone's interested, at the dollar store. So that was a donation that we received. And the students enjoyed the tests on the computer, because some of them said when they were writing on the CMTs, they'd get hand cranks, because they were writing so fast and for such a long period of time. They enjoyed the test on the computer, because they thought it was more engaging, and the tests were more open-ended, where they could really explain why they were doing the work that they were doing. I went into this expecting the entire system to crash. I thought we were going to have major problems, and instead, I was very pleasantly surprised. So I think overall, it was a good experience at Skinner Road.
And I'll just speak a little bit about the preparations at Main Street School, similar to Mrs. Simon's with the scheduling. Truly, a lot of our preparations began after our pilot test last school year. Teachers, as well as students, noticed the increase in the complexity of questions that students were being asked to respond to, directions of test items being embedded within a larger text, as opposed to really standing out in bold strength for the students to explicitly be told what task they were to complete. And so a lot of those observations and student feedback guided our practice in the classroom, as well as our scheduling for this school year. We came up with a couple bottom lines last school year, as we were looking to create our schedule for this year, and some of those bottom lines were uninterrupted English-language arts blocks, so we can increase the student stamina, truthfully, with reading and writing tasks. Additionally, we wanted to lengthen the amount of our library time scheduled for each class to ensure that every child is on tape to learn and building their computer literacy skills, because we don't want the computer itself to be an obstacle in students being able to truly demonstrate what they know and have mastered. So that all began last year. And truthfully, some people will say, well, are you teaching at the test now? And a couple weeks back, I had the opportunity to be at an ESPEC colloquium at UConn, and one of the questions was, you shouldn't really teach to the test, but if the test is grounded in good research, and it really is rigorous, and it aligns correctly with the Common Core student standards, then is it a bad then if we let that rigor guide what we're doing every day in our classrooms? Because those are some of the conversations we've had as a building, and I'm sure across the district, that's informed what we're doing each day in our classrooms. You can see teachers more frequently embedding technology, whether it's a video clip or a sound clip in their instruction, providing students with multiple pieces of text requiring them to synthesize the information that they come across, and clearly articulate their learning and writing. So in addition to those sorts of instructional changes that we have made in the building that impact our daily instruction and practice, the day in the life of the ESPEC test, it's quite a different implementation style than the Connecticut Mastery Test was. Being with the technology piece, I think there's some increased test security practices and measures that are put into place. Mrs. Simon had referenced how a unique Alvin Merrick code is assigned to the test administrator every test session that's opened up. Students have to have the test that they select approved by the test administrator. So our tide system, trying to think off the top of my head, the test information distribution engine. I know it prunes me, thank you. So once we're logged into that, you have to approve that every child's taking the correct assessment. Student's work is trapped in there, you can see which test item they're working on, you can see if they pause or exit a task, you can see when they submit a test. So there's many measures that are put in place to ensure that students are on the right assessment at all times. Additionally, there's a sound check, because there are video auditory clips that are embedded within the assessments. So to check the functionality of that feature on the assessment, students must check the sound before beginning. Additionally, they have a mini tutorial that shows them all the functions that are embedded within the test. The test was created under the concept of universal design, meaning that there are many different accommodations that students can use, spell check, a dictionary, highlight, covering parts of a page, so test items are only shown once at a time. The help tutorial shows them briefly how to utilize some of those functions, and again, every time a student logs in, that is what they see. Student feedback we have received, similar to what Mrs. Simon has shared at Skinner Road School, some students are innately driven to be on technology, and so some kiddos that have a hard time to prepare for pencil tasks are more motivated to do the assessment. Some think it was just right for them, some think it was very challenging, and some think it was too easy. But students have been working hard and working diligently. We've had some obstacles with the technology piece, the system freezing, but our IT department has been readily available, as has the ESPEC help desk, the technology support there as well. Students have said things from, wow, these Chromebooks must be a million dollars, I want one at home, to, are we done with the testing yet? So we've had a whole range of student feedback, but it has been a successful field test thus far. We are not yet done, we have a few instructors still, and they're too small to finish up, but they're plugging away, and they're working hard.
Before we go to the results, I think our students are not here, Mrs. Simon, so we don't have them directly to tell you how they felt as they went through the testing. However, we do have results of some survey that we'd like to share with you. Before that, I just wanted to add, we not only worked with teachers within the school community or members of the school community, we actually went to the community of large, Mr. Bird held an information session, and I think it was very well attended. Several administrators also participated to answer some questions that community members might have, as several students in several buildings of theirs were taking or about to take the test. So, and we'll continue to do those kinds of, you know, informational sessions in small communities, perhaps with PTOs, as well as with our students and staff. As we go to the surveys, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Simon for coming up with the questions and quickly getting the survey done. We started at Skinner Road School, and we decided that that might be a survey that we could use throughout the school system. So we ended up passing it on to other buildings, as well as providing an online copy through Survey Monkey, so people could have the option of doing either the paper or the online version of the survey. So the first question really talked about the test itself, and just very briefly, what was it just right for me, was it hard for me, or was it easy? And the graph itself is very self-explanatory, so we'll just go through these slides. This is third and fourth grade, third on the left, and as you can see, you know, as they move to, as you look at the next grade, about the fourth grade, well, four of the students thought it was just right for them. And then, getting better, fifth grade, now sixth grade, interestingly, not as the fifth grade was, which, you know, which might give us pause, and, you know, those are the kids who've taken the CMTs from many years before. So, you know, they have this impression about the CMT, and now they're faced with a very new type of testing, and they're probably wondering, well, how do I do this? So that's question number one, how do I, what do I think about the test? Question number two, we talked about just using the computer for the testing, rather than using paper and pencil, and really, with all grade levels, I thought the results were very good, that they do like using the computer. So it just gets better, and again, grade six was a little bit different. Question number three, talked about the Chromebooks, since we had written a grant in the summer, and made sure that we could acquire more technology for our district. We wanted to get a feel for this type of technology that we ended up purchasing, over 415, I believe, Chromebooks for the entire district, and they were distributed to all the schools, and students got them, you know, just a couple of weeks ahead, just so that they could get used to the way Chrome looked like, might be very similar to a laptop, but somewhat different. And so some didn't use them, not all of the kids needed to use them, especially at the elementary level, because the grade levels are smaller, they'd get them in sessions and just use the PC. Being connected, obviously, was a real, you know, was far better than to have a wireless that they would work on. It was more a chance of sort of using the browser or getting kicked out. So it was nice that most of our students were able to stay on the PC. So here's grade five and six, and I think in grade six, we did have, I think that it was a very large class, we did have quite a few Chromebook users, and I think that they did like using the Chromebooks. So question four, what would I need in order to be better on the test? So this would give us some good information about getting ready for the operational test for next year. And you can see, without a doubt, in this slide, as well as the next one, that the kids do talk a lot about opportunities on the computer, to be able to go to the lab, to use the computer, and be familiar with especially some of the navigational tools that are on the ESPEC test itself. So we would hope to use the practice test several times over prior to the operational test, to get them used to some of those kinds of functions. So this is grades four, five, and six, you know, I like the ESPEC better than the CMT, and the blue obviously showing us whether they like the ESPEC better. And clearly, I think the computer use, the interactivity, sometimes, for example, they would have a leader, somebody would read the text, and then they could answer the questions. There was audio, there was video, and I think a lot of kids thought that was just fun, and it was not actually like taking a test. So some of the comments spoke to how fun it was to take this test. So, yeah, and there were comments about how difficult some of the questions were as well, and we included some of them, coming up next. So some of the survey comments, I'm better at typing, so ESPEC is obviously better for me, faster at typing, it didn't hurt my hand, and it's nice to be able to listen to what they're talking about, rather than just reading it as it would have been on the CMTs. And then I like the ESPEC better, because it is not complicated, easier and funner. And one student actually wrote surprisingly easier, and they would be able to skip and go back to it, and that was an option that they really liked, and also to pause and come back. And we included some of the CMT lovers as well, like I like the CMT better, we can underline things. Now, this particular comment gives, you know, for those of us who've been dealing with ESPEC testing for the past, well, last year with the pilots, and this year, that we have a lot of work to do, because indeed, there's highlighting possible on the ESPEC, and probably that was something that was, you know, not, that get picked up on, student picked up on. One of the things that we have been told at the several meetings that we've been to, that we are allowed to go to the students as we navigate through the room, and just point out that they could do that, that here's this function, were you trying to go back, go forward, and help the student with those kinds of navigational information, and it's not as if we're giving away the answers. So, and if you're not good at typing, then you like the CMTs better. And of course, we want the ESPEC's dominated a bit, it was difficult for some, and some just missed the CMT, he's going to come chewing, I guess, the next. Lessons learned for us, I think, as I read through, we got tons of comments, I just included a few for you. I'll be happy to send on a copy to Dr. Conway and Mr. Bird to review. So I need more practice on the keyboard, clearly, we need to work on that as a district. I like CMT better, because it takes more time to sign into ESPEC. So we need to work on our connectivity and making sure that our IT staff are on hand, and see that the browsers are working on every single unit. And then it was hard, it was, I liked the ESPEC, because it was on the computer, it's hard to drag things. So, you know, it could have been a small, younger child, you know, for them, that kind of been a very difficult thing to do with older skills. So the test is kind of hard, we need to push the computers, because mine had a ditch. So, you know, it's unfortunate, and we did, you know, all of our IT staff, I commend, every one of them, they were just incredible. They have all their cell phones, they just quick call our texts, and they're there immediately. So easily, again and again, that more time on the computers is very, very important for us as the adults to kind of make sure. For us as the as the adults, to kind of make sure that we include directions for students and have them practice, multi-part directions is probably extremely important in preparation for the Sback. So student preparedness, continued IT support, technological refinements, I mean, we did have some issues with connectivity, and, you know, I think we made sure that we encouraged some schools to get more, you know, more more of the restricts to make sure that they could all be connected. And then we're hoping that all of the test administrators throughout the district and the school test coordinators could gather before the end of the school year and talk about, as a roundtable, just discuss, well, what is it that worked, what can we do better, what can we learn from the surveys, as well as all of the comments from our students. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to update you, and certainly, as we get more results from our surveys, we'll pass those along as well. Thank you to Mrs. Ross and Mrs. Simon as well. We're happy to take questions. Do you have any questions? Mrs. Fisher?
I attended the meeting we had for that staff and community, and one of the concerns was what did, what did they do when they were done with the test? Did you have any problems with making sure the students had something to do, I love them talking about reading book? How did you handle that?
I can tell you what we did in scale. Those students who were in the computer lab, when they finished, the first students, as they finished, the teacher went back to the room and took the students back with them to work on either reading, or do some more small group activity. If they were in the room, they were really doing something quiet, such as reading. So next year, that's when the things will change, where all of the kids will be in a different room to do the testing, and then they'll have the ability to go back to their room, because then we're not just having to do busy work such as reading, but the teachers could be going to small groups and having students work on work that they would benefit from.
I think it's really good to know, because that was a concern. It's good you guys worked it all out.
Any other questions?
The question I have is, in a situation where they're having technical issues, what problems have you encountered thus far? And in terms of how you keep the children motivated so that they don't get off task in the meantime, while the problems are being taken care of?
The technical difficulties, like the student that had the glitch on the computer, was about maybe thirty minutes, because they couldn't log in on that computer, it was a problem with the computer, we quickly put them on another computer, and then had to get them up and running. There was one day when we couldn't log on everyone on the test, I thought it was something I was doing, because it was like day two, but that was the one day when the state was down. And that was once we realized that I had called J, and it was about a fifteen-minute wait, and then we just brought the kids back to the room and picked up that test the next day. So the kids' perspective, what it was two or three minutes, seemed like a really long time to them.
So the problem isn't necessarily ours at the moment, it's it's the state as well. So you had no problem reconnecting on future dates to make sure that everybody got their warning, that's probably?
That was really the only day, but I understand that we had less problems than other school districts did in this state. And one day we had, we didn't realize we had to have two separate routers, so the computers were fighting to get onto the same router. So I ran out to Staples and Bottom on the router, and we ended up having another problem, I think Lake Street, some of these stuff, same problem.
I think several schools had to do that, and one of the things that Mary Rooney, who I just spoke to today, I said, well, what are you thinking, what about next year? And she did say that sometimes it's user error, and, you know, kids may not know exactly what to do, but sometimes it's just it's just a technological glitch. And then one of the things that I think we worked out with Sback is that apparently there were several sites which were, which needed to be whitelisted, so that they don't interfere with the browser, the Sback browser, and they had to get that list from Sback and make sure that we did whitelist them, so that when our kids get on, you know, it's not going to interfere. So we've been doing all the right things to make sure that, you know, it goes smoothly. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher, I may add, two very great comments. The reason this presentation is scrolling is we did expect a couple of Skinner Road School students, and we wanted to make sure that they would come in and get home and do their homework. But the other is, I know Mrs. Ross was very modestly indicating that she attended the colloquium at the University of Connecticut. She was the teacher on the panel, representing teachers in the state of Connecticut on that panel. So she did, she does bring an expertise to that, and we're very proud that she represented not only us, but certainly the state, so thank you, Mrs. Ross.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Now we move on to item three point zero, the consent agenda. Mr. Wood?
Motion to move the consent agenda?
It's her second. Mrs. Bush?
Second.
And we want to vote, Mr. Stinson?
I'm going to vote aye.
Aye, did you?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Arndt?
I'd like to vote B, Jay, please.
Okay, anyone else? Right then, we will throw it on items C, D, F, G, H, I, K, and L. All those in favor? All those, okay, that's unanimous. Now, Mr. Stinson, I may.
Perfect. Thank you. It's currently moving on page six, that I left the meeting at nine oh two, but it's on page seven, and it has me voting now on several motions that I wasn't here for.
Does anyone else have anything on eight? Okay, do we want to make a motion to approve that group's changes?
I'll make a motion to approve item A as amended.
Mr. Wood?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? What's its unanimous? Okay, now, Mrs. Arndt?
I'm looking at item two point zero, and in the first paragraph, it says that we're going to move the main entrance of the office at Skinner Road School to North East School. Take a look at that. It's a great security move, I think.
Two point zero, page one of the facilities committee. First paragraph.
I love it. And I thought for a suggestion there, putting a period after PK room, and then starting the next sentence with, at North East School, comma, the new secure entrance will be constructed inside of that campus. punctuation is up.
Mrs. Arndt?
I would to approve the amendment.
Item six, Mr. Wood?
I'd second the motion.
Any further discussion, comments, or questions? All those in favor? Now, Mrs. Arndt, E.
I'm looking at the nine point zero, and the South Committee approved requesting a preparatory for the capital non-referring education fund. We're assuming that that didn't happen, that that requires a board, board, okay, so it's not the committee, but the board, okay.
So we have a motion to approve those amendments?
So.
And this is her second. Push?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, or questions? All those in favor? And the last one is item J.
I certainly have an objection to the to the donation, but I wondered if there were plans for expending the $5,000?
I thought it says published.
It said in the past that it was a library.
This is published, can you address that for us?
This is not the first time, fortunately for us, that the church has donated to the school, so in the past, I have put it out to the staff to kind of prioritize wishes, wants, needs, and then we go from there. So that's why I had said what we'd used it for in the past, I didn't make any plans for what to use it for now, because I wanted it to get approved first before I had any plans for it. I could certainly report on the outcome of what the staff votes on, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Would you mind doing that?
Sure.
Sure.
I would to approve item J, consent agenda.
It's her second, you know, Mr. Community. Any further comments, concerns, discussion? All those in favor? Yes, thank you very much. Now we move on to item four point zero, secretary's report.
Excuse me. As a result of passing the consent agenda, that leaves the item of the $16,000 outstanding, which basically requires us now to make a motion that we go to the town council, asking that those $16,000 for the track and tennis court repair provided by the capital non-referring fund.
That's later on in the agenda.
It is.
The facilities committee, as well as committee N.
Okay, I'll be happy to make it then versus now, I just will expression everybody's mind. That's where it comes from, is that committee action. Okay.
Item four point zero, secretary's report, four point one, opportunity for the Board of Education to add or delete agenda items. Anyone want to add something to these? Okay, moving on. Item four point two, Rockfall High School's student representative report, ordering in one of the others.
Good evening. So a couple of weeks ago, at the community congressional reunion, Dr. Parlow, you asked if we had any recommendations or ideas, and I didn't have one at the time, but I came up with a little later and I shared it here. I think that our students should be financially literate, so we should start requiring a financial class for graduation, and you should be able to complete such basic tasks that will benefit you during your life, and you won't leave high school not knowing how to balance a checkbook, or complete other simple tasks that may benefit you in your life. And next, it happened a bit ago, I don't know the exact time specifically, but we dropped general level classes, and to an extent, I do understand the sensitive issues behind it, with the inflexibility that it creates for some students, but some students really do need these general level classes that they can drop down to, because they can't handle the college or the honors. I have a friend who's in college chem, who started in honors, had to drop down, she barely passed her honors, or college chem, she's struggling very, very hard with it, and if there was a general level class or something like that, people at her would benefit from it. So as to whether to reinstate all general level classes, if you can't stay with it, be the right move, but we should find some balance for lower level classes for the people that really need it. And since we didn't get the commentary from the students, the elementary level, I figured I'd give a little bit of my experience with the Sback testing. The first math test we took was extremely difficult at times, to extremely easy, the test was inconsistent at S, they were, or inconsistent, sorry, it would bounce around from place to place, from calculus to basic algebra, it seemed like the test had no real orientation of where it wanted to go. And something that really bothered me when we got to the English test, was the dictionary option, that even the highlighted word, that some words were highlighted, and it would tell you what they meant. These words weren't usually particularly difficult, there were a few cases where it made sense, but a lot of these words were just common words that I guess they thought we wouldn't know, but even to that extent, it's an English exam, you should know those words, and I don't believe they should be spoon fed to you, because you may not know them. But, I don't know, and the English test seemed rather long comparatively to the math exam. It took a lot more time to finish, it had a lot of reading that would take, it took me pretty much, pretty much the entire time to get through just the reading, like, or pretty much the bare minimum for responses, but it, the test was a bit too long, so that's all.
Thank you. Olivia?
Hello. So AP tests are coming up, we're all anxiously waiting for the day, you know, as a senior, I already did it last year, but it does not make it any easier, so everyone's preparing for that, you know, we've had some teachers change, and we've had some courses, you know, being offered, and that really emphasizes student talent, and I think it's going to be really interesting to get some of the results back, because I know that interest in ECE classes has kind of pushed aside AP classes, and you could talk about why all day, but, and I know that AP chem was not offered this year, which is, which usually happens every other year. So it'll be interesting to see the span of classes that students have taken, and how well they're doing, and, you know, I think it demonstrates on the teacher as well as the student, you know, communication wise, how are they getting the material across, and how are the students receptive to it? So that'll be really interesting, I know all of us are ready to just be done with it. Spring sports have finally started, now that there's no snow on the ground, so far, you can never tell, but baseball, softball, track, tennis, volleyball, boys volleyball, I guess they're doing all right so far. You know, it's been coming up, and it's really good to see kids walking around in their baseball, our softball uniforms, and maybe our softball team will pull out another championship, you never know. So that's really the honor, really. The piano recital for the high school is tonight, actually, it's a new opportunity for kids who play the piano and don't get an opportunity to play in one of the bands at their school. I know jazz band is the only band in our course, opportunities, that has piano players. So I think it was a neat opportunity, there's keyboarding classes, but a lot of the time these pianists are much more advanced than playing cross balls or sains, so I think they really appreciated the opportunity, and I hope it will continue. So as a senior, I only was able to take a brief section of the pilot test last year for the Sback, and so I didn't think it fair for me to comment on it, as I have not fully participated. So as student representative, I thought it would be best to give the students an opportunity to speak their minds, and so I created a forum, and I have a couple of students whose names will remain anonymous, who really wanted to share their experience, and so I thought that'd be the most beneficial thing for you guys to hear, so you get a real student perspective, I guess, for the high school, as well as air encouraging words. So, sorry, bear with me, technology. Okay, so, one student says, I feel as though the material we are being tested on is information we have not learned. Standardized testing is supposed to test your strengths, weaknesses, and abilities, but if the chance for your strengths to be tested isn't there, the test is setting students up for failure? And I'm only reading a select few, because there were a lot of students who had something to say. One other student says, well, being someone who has already finished all of their standardized testing for high school, this feels like an unnecessary reason to take the juniors out of our classes. This test literally plays no roles in our lives at all, yet we have to miss our real classes that do matter in order to take them. It also seems like the teachers aren't being informed on what's actually going on with the testing. For example, the schedules say tomorrow that the juniors have to take the test in either blocks three or four, I have cultures, which is a double block during that time. Our teachers' plan was to teach the lesson to the first block of students, and then teach the same materials in the second block of students. Today, during my testing, we were informed that if you had finished the test, you didn't have to go back tomorrow. My teachers were never informed of this, so tomorrow, and the entire class is there for both of the blocks, they're going to have to change their whole lesson plan. In general, I feel like this whole thing has really just been a huge unnecessary frustration to the students and teachers. And another student, it is just a waste of time, because none of us care about it, and hardly anybody is taking it seriously and actually trying on it. Also, like, just about everybody said, it would be different if we were getting tested on the things we learn, but it makes no sense to test us on things that we won't be learning for another year or two. Almost, I promise. Another student, these are all really well-written, so I always had to choose. The Sback tests, in my opinion, were underdeveloped and not efficiently planned. Yes, I wanted to upgrade the testing curriculum and amp up the relevance to now modern-day technology, but I found it quite annoying. but I found it quite annoying. I am only in geometry, therefore I did not nor well have learned many of the questions that were incorporated into the S- Math test. Also, we were doing math. Math involves lots of writing, equations, and planning. Therefore, having this math section on computer was an annoyance in itself. Overall, the experience with the S- Math test thus far has been quite a disturbance in my everyday studies." Oops, sorry. "It was not organized well at all. The math portion was calculus for me, and obviously I don't know that. Teachers don't really know what to teach because half the class isn't there. And staring at a computer hurts my and other students' eyes." And lastly, "Now I haven't taken it, but from what I've heard, the test was not designed around the current curriculum, which is just plain silly. When the curriculum changes to that level, give those students this level of test. But the so-called practice test is going to have no valid data because even the students that tried did poorly on it. I feel bad for the juniors who were removed from their classes for this test. Colleges look most heavily at junior year grades to see improvements from start to end of the year. Instead of getting through the material they needed now to prepare for their exams, they were subjected to a poorly organized, confusing test that honestly is not very relevant to them." So that was student feedback overall. It was clearly not the most positive, but I think there's a lot to glean from it, such as the math portion having an available writing section because it does involve so much math and equation feelings. And the fact that they're being taken out of some of their classes is really disrupting their studies and disrupting teacher lesson plans. And just some of the other overall things that they feel unprepared. And so there was really a trend. And I think as student representative, it was only fair to give them a voice. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Erin or Olivia? Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate it. Now we'll move on to item five point zero, Community Forum. This is opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the Board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close Community Forum. And we'll move on to item six point zero, Personnel. Six point one, Amendment to Year Two Alliance Grant for the LEAD Connecticut Turnaround Principal Program.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. The, there is a balance of funding in the Alliance Grant, which we can carry over from year to year. We plan to do that this year. However, a new opportunity had come forward from LEAD Connecticut. LEAD Connecticut is about a year and a half old, being funded by both the William Casper Gresson Foundation through the Connecticut Center for School Change and the State Department of Education. It is really about growing the leaders. As you know, and I've said over and over again, the most important thing, a child's education is a high quality teacher. And the second thing is a high quality building administrator. And so certainly, we want to grow those leaders continuously. We have, as you know, the Board did hire a new principal for Maple Street School in February. One of the reasons we were hoping to hire early for that position was so that that person could get into the LEAD Connecticut program. It is an eight week program. I've included the calendar. I thought that was the most clear explanation of what she would be doing. She, Mrs. Trantolo will be in the district really only for about five days in May, in the three, three or four weeks in May. She'll be in there much more in June. But she will be visiting turnaround schools in, I would say, New York, or Newark, in Chicago, in Boston, Springfield. So there are a number of places where she's learning with her cohort from UConn about how to really turn around a school and get high achievement. These are schools with high poverty, a high minority population, and very high achievement. And that is the, that's why they're called turnaround schools. And so we're very anxious. We met actually this afternoon, Mr. Burton. I met with Mrs. Trantolo this afternoon to be talking about the program. She'll start that a week from today, May 5th. And we're very, very excited. But this requires an amendment to the Alliance Grant because we would be using some of the funds, approximately nineteen thousand dollars of this year's funds that still needs to be balanced for which we can, which we can carry over.
Do you want to make a question, Mrs. Fisher?
I'd like to make a motion that the Learning Board of Education approve the amendment to Year Two Alliance Grant to include the use of funding nineteen thousand, three hundred and five dollars and three cents for the LEAD CT turnaround principal program.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Any discussion? Mrs. Hunt?
I thought that, for lack of a better word, I'll call it, that you'll include in the package was really relevant and rigorous. And it struck me that it's too bad that only one principal can take advantage of that. Is there any, is there any way to expand the opportunity to, to others principals? It just seems a shame to use this for one principal.
You're asking the exact same question we asked as well. We wish to do that. As a matter of fact, we had to push because we are not a review, we don't have any review schools, we don't have any focus schools as designated by the state. So we're moving along. And we said, we, we want someone to have this training. There is a second cohort that starts in the summer. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to do that. It is a commitment to, of time certainly, to have someone do that. But we had asked the same question. So this is so new, this is the first time they've ever done this cohort. And they did a cohort last end of summer, beginning of fall, that went through the, the school year for people who were out there last year. But we are hoping to do that. We're pushing, and we've been pretty pushing, so.
And that the remaining dollars with, in the Alliance, that we're carrying over could continue to support something like that and it comes to fruition?
And actually, what is happening right now is because Ms. Trantolo has joined us right now, that we had not budgeted for her from May 5th until the end of school year. And that's why we use Alliance District Funds. If we have a sitting principal, they would just complete their regular salary. So it would cost us more money. They would be out of the district for a certain amount of time. But that's why we need extra money for Ms. Trantolo because she started early. But there wouldn't be another cost for that. The state is footing the bill for this.
And the fact that we're, I don't know how to say this positively, but the fact that we're Alliance District doesn't, I mean, I know you said you've been pushing, but that bears no weight?
It, it wore enough weight to get this person into the, into the program.
Well, could I just second your, your efforts to, to expand, to expand that? Or I hope you can back and say that you've been successful.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Chair?
What does that mean, this balance for carried over for next year? For the Alliance money?
Mr. Pocaro, do you have a balance on that particular grant account, Alliance District?
Through the chair, approximately thirty-six thousand dollars. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I have a motion on the floor to approve the amendment to our Year Two Alliance Grant. All those in there? And then we'll move on to item seven point zero, Curriculum. Seven point one, this is a straight update from our instructional coaches. And welcome our, three of our instructional coaches here. Our three instructional coaches. Our three. Actually, come to the Board several times a year to share. We're just going to check on our technology before we get started. Make sure we're all set.
Good evening. So we're the three instructional coaches for the elementary K through five. Jenny Fisher, this is Jenny Mello to my left, and Paula Hughes. There's also a classroom environment coach that cannot be here this evening, Megan Duffy, so we'll be presenting on her behalf as well. So this evening, we'd like to share with you some of our highlights. We were last here in December. And we've been doing lots of different work since then. So we wanted to highlight some of this important work that we've been doing. So... So back in December, we talked and shared with you about how we were starting to put some meat on the skeletal curriculum that we had to help teachers really implement what was happening in their classroom on a day-to-day basis. So we have these implementation guides that we've been working on. And to date, we've written about thirty-five implementation guides, K through five. There's six units for language arts per grade level. And today, we wanted to share an example of what an implementation guide looks like. So the first thing that we wanted to do is to kind of explain to you what, what is this. So we picked one sample, which is for third grade. It's what the student call biography book clubs. And so teachers receive this at the beginning, prior to the beginning of their unit, this guides their instruction for the thirty-four days. On the first page, you'll see an overview where the teachers are provided with a narrative that describes the goals of the unit, specifically the Common Course Day standards that this unit is allowing to. And by the end of the unit, what we hope our students to be able, to know and be able to do. As we move on to the next part of the implementation guide, you'll see that we have sections called bends. And these are the big ideas of the unit. And under each bend, we provide for the teacher, again, a narrative and the goals of that section. So each bend is moving the students towards reaching the goals of what the Common Course Day standards of this unit are asking for the students to be able to do. So after the explanation of those bends, we provide teachers with resources, lesson plans. And we also, and we'll talk a little bit later, we've created a coaching website where we place many resources that support the individual units, K through five. So it provides teachers with a place to go to find additional resources to implement the unit. And then the next part is we always provide the standards that the unit is addressing. And the next section is what the teachers appreciate, I think, the most, too, are a series or a sequence of teaching points that the teachers utilize in order to bring those Common Course Day standards to life in their classroom on a day-to-day basis. So these are suggested, a suggested progression of teaching points. Of course, the teachers use their knowledge of the students sitting in front of them to make decisions on a daily basis. You'll notice that, I don't know if you can see, but there's in parentheses, we also label what Common Course Day standard is being addressed in that lesson. And we also provide teachers with a sample lesson plan that they could reference when implementing this in their classroom. So there's a chunk full of resources that the teachers are able to utilize to really help them interpret what are the standards asking them to do at the individual grade levels. We want to make sure that what we're asking our students to do is rigorous and continues to develop across grade levels. So we're able to show the students and the, show the teachers, too, the progression of what that looks like. And then at the end, we try different Eker charts that we, they're samples that the teachers would co-create with the students during lessons that would be hanging in their room as evidence and for students to reference while going through the unit. So it's evidence of the high level rigor that we're asking our students to be able to do. So that's an example of one of the implementation guides. So that's one. And as we said, we've written thirty-five of these so far this year with our goal to have all the units completed by the start of the 2014, '15 school year. So we're very excited. Of course, they're all a work in progress. And curriculum is a living document. So we're constantly receiving feedback from teachers and revising them on a daily basis. And so the way that we're able to communicate these units to our teachers is as coaches, we're attending monthly grade level meetings. And at these grade level meetings, we're able to describe the unit to our teachers. And this has been great because we're building our consistent interpretation of what these units mean. The standards oftentimes can be interpreted in many different ways. So we're taking that guessing out of what does that standard mean? And we're able to communicate at every school that we go to the same message so that all our students are receiving the same access to curriculum, whether you're at Lake Street, or you're at Skinner, or you're at Northeast, or Maple. Everyone's getting that same message, which is excellent. And at this meeting, is where we're also able to share additional resources. Of course, this guide is in everything that we provide to our teachers. So in order to facilitate the dissemination of additional resources, we've created a website called thecoachingconnection.webly.com. This is in addition to the website that our district has. We put things out here daily to support the work that's happening in our classrooms. So you'll notice that there's tabs on the top for each of the different content areas. So if you clicked on the main tab, for example, Reading, it brings you to a page that provides teachers with resources, K through five. These are high quality resources that we've sifted through prior to placing them up here that are aligned to our units and are aligned to the Common Core and are high quality. So not only do we have this cover page, but teachers can also then click on their individual grade level. So for example, they can click down to third grade. So just take you to a sample that would correspond with this unit. And they could, they could scroll down to where it says, I can't even read that. Unit four, biography book clubs. And there's, these are all different resources or websites, book lists that the teachers can click on that supports the unit that they're teaching. So for example, there's one that's graphic organizers. So if the teacher clicks on graphic organizers, there's about twenty-five different graphic organizers here that go along with the, you know, study, biographies or narrative, nonfiction. So they're able to pick and choose something that works well for them and that also addresses perhaps the teaching point or objective that they are addressing in their classrooms on a daily basis. So that's just one example. So that's kind of a sample of an implementation guide. And now, I would like to turn it over to Paula Hughes. And she's going to share some additional information on Megan Duffy's behalf.
Hello. Megan was planning on being here tonight, but got sick over the weekend and decided not to share her drones with us. So that was a good thing. So I was just going to highlight some of what I know that she's been working on and the resources that she has out on our Coaching Connection website. So I know that she works a lot with teachers on an individual basis on needs that they have for classroom management. So she goes in and she observes and she provides them with feedback of what they should do to strengthen their classroom management skills. But through her section of the website, there's a lot of resources for teachers that don't contact her individually. So for instance, there is a classroom management section and that, you know, teachers can go to it and go through links or documents to help them with their, with their classroom management. Another thing that she's been extremely active with this year is the anti-bullying. She's done professional development at, I believe, almost all schools. And there's great resources here on the website, again, under the bullying prevention. So I think on that tab, the first thing that comes up is, you know, the current Connecticut law on bullying. And... And I know that she has written some documents and lesson plans, and one of those is on here for grade five. And currently, the Center Road School of Grade Five is working on these lesson plans and piloting them. And I'm going to read something that she wrote to me in her email today. She is not feeling old, but she still wanted to make sure that we were focusing on what she wanted to highlight tonight. So she was saying that all the lessons are very interactive for the students and that they really focus on raising awareness for recognizing the different forms of bullying and explicitly teaching students how they can leverage their power as bystanders to become upstanders. So I know that the teachers at Center Road, I think they've gone through lesson six, and lesson six is on cyberbullying, and they've given her positive feedback on the sequence of lessons so far. So I'm sure she really had work to share, and she will here, but it's not anything that she's been working on.
Okay. At this point, we'd like to talk a little bit about what we've been working on in math. And we are working very hard to support our Common Core math curriculum, and we're doing this in several ways. First of all, we have started writing implementation guides for grades K through two. And these include not only the standards, but essential questions, vocabulary, strategies, and a new assessment. Something else we've been working on is bringing a new resource to the district. It's called Eureka Map. And Eureka Map includes lessons that are Common Core-aligned. They are very rich in problem-solving. They help build students' number sense and have a lot of inquiry-based activities for the students. In addition, we have provided professional development to all K one and two teachers. Recently, at our last whole PD day, we had the teachers from all those grade levels come. And during that time, we were able to share a lot of information with them. To begin with, we shared with them information as Common Core coaches for the state of Connecticut. We've been attending trainings, and it's our responsibility to bring that information back to the district. So we were able to give them that information. We also showed them the new Eureka Map lessons. We pulled up the website and showed them how it's a kind of self-service place for them to stay organized and seek additional resources. And then, in addition to that, we showed some videos of us modeling lessons. So that's something new this year. The three of us decided to have ourselves videotaped as we teach lessons. This, you know, is something we hope to continue going forward. It's a very efficient way for us to show and set a standard for the district. So if we're teaching a lesson once and they can videotape it, it's a good use of our time instead of having to teach the same lesson at five or six elementary schools here in town. And we hope to build a library of these lessons. The feedback we received from teachers was very positive. They were excited to kind of see us take a risk, but see what these lessons look like. So oftentimes, they're so overwhelmed with everything they have to do, it's hard to read through a complicated lesson and then plan it and visualize it. So having us do that and model it really gives them a strong reference point as to what will that look like in my classroom with students right here in Vermont. So that leads us to our next part of our presentation. We would like to show you some of those video clips from teaching lessons. We took small clips from all of our lessons and put them together. So you'll see a kindergarten room, a first-grade room, and a second-grade room. We've split the video into three sections here. So the first section is on fluency, and I just want to provide a little bit of background information about that. We've really widened our definition of what fluency is. It's not just a basic recall of facts quickly. It's counting. It's recognizing quantity. And it's also strategies. So can our students use strategies in a way that's efficient, flexible, and accurate? So a couple of things I wanted to highlight, if you want to look for them in this section of the video, is that we use visuals and manipulatives, that there is math discourse that we're working with our students to encourage that. You'll see even kindergartners critiquing the reasoning of others, constructing and justifying arguments. And then there's also a clip of us reflecting on our teaching. Our new teacher evaluation program is a reflection model, so we wanted to model that for the teachers as well. But I hear some people thinking something different. Landon, what do you think? Landon thinks seven. Why do you think that? What do you see here?
A two.
A two here and a five. Five dots on the top row. Okay. So five and two, how do you get to seven? How many are on the top row?
Five.
Five, and then what? Okay, so five, six, seven, if you can count on. Okay, so you saw this is six, and one more means seven. Excellent. Anyone else? Okay. So you get a seven, and then put the three away. Ten minus three is, wow, there's three. Okay, it's boys and girls, oh my goodness. Turn it off, why did you speak? All right, so now we're on to the second part of our video. And this part includes, oh, sorry, one more part. Why do we do choose the ten-frame flash? It shows that activity. If I wanted to see if the students would be able to visually subvertize or recognize the number of objects in a group without having to count them one by one. I knew right away that they weren't doing it as quickly or fluently as I would have liked. I had expected to move through fairly quickly, but I wasn't able to. So I spent a little bit of time talking about how they knew how many dots were in and getting them to rethink some of their answers. But I also made a decision that I wasn't going to spend a lot of time on that because I didn't want to get sidetracked from the main objective of my lesson. I think that was a valuable activity because I learned a lot about my students, and I'm already thinking about where would I go from here? I know I need to address it at some point, so I'd probably go back and maybe start with just five frames and have the students become secure in zero to five, and then move on to ten. All right, so now we're ready for the second part of our video. This part, we call concept development, which is where we give really the daily objective for math. And what you'll notice throughout these videos is that there is a progression from K to one to two, and you'll see the level rise in each of the classrooms. A couple of practices that I wanted to highlight before we show it to you. The first one is talk moves. So we're encouraging, again, math discourse. You'll see that sometimes we revoice or repeat what the student's saying or add-on to their thinking. Another highlight is that posting objectives in student-friendly language, we know that's a high-yield strategy, so we wanted to include that. And then finally, the use of visuals and manipulatives to really help differentiate instruction for the range of levels in our classroom for ESL students and specialist students. It's boys and girls. When do we know about a number? Take a number.
We can put it together with another number.
And make.
Number sentences. Yes, very good. How many people he said was knows? We can take numbers and we can put that together. He said to make a number sentence, like two plus three is five. But what we're doing, Sophie, is we're taking two numbers and we're putting them together. So we know there's parts inside a number. That's our big idea for today. I'm going to stick that up here. I'm going to read this to you. You can read it, you can read along with me, okay? It says, "I can break numbers into smaller numbers." Here's a picture of five cubes, and we broke it into a three and a two. Oh, that, there's a number, there's one number hiding inside of five. Can everybody look up here at my center room, please? I see two. See that two is hiding inside of five? Two is a part of five. So let me show you the whole, the total. Does everybody agree that we have five in all? And do you see that when I come around some chips, I see two hiding inside? Two is a part of five. Now we have the number detectors. What other number with two makes five? What's the other part? All right? If I need to figure out, what do I need to add to nine to make ten? Sean? So watch this. I'm going to slide by one on top of the nine. Do you see how now I have a whole ten frame? Easy to get there all the way there. And so what number, Sean, do I have to make that ten? I took. One and nine, and I made? Very good. Everybody, this will be ready? One. Nine. Ready? Ten. Excellent. So much, I'm here. I have one, I have nine, and that means ten. Can you tell me another way I can write this? What's another way I can write this? What's another way I can write this? Gina?
Ten, I need nine.
Excellent, Gina. What will you hope to accomplish during the concept development portion of the lesson?
Well, first, I realized that the students didn't have any exposure to number bonds, which is something that they were going to be using during the whole concept development for the specific objective. So I had to model just by a number bond for us. I need a connection between this ten and the ten they had already had experience with and the number bonds and going deeper that numbers are going to be composed into numbers and that parts are together to make a total.
All right, and there's one last session here where we focus on the release of responsibility to the students. So we've modeled and guided, and now it's time for the students to practice and kind of get their hands on some of the materials independently. And then we also show the debrief for closure at the ending of the lesson. You can see that student work is valued, that we encourage speaking and listening for our students, and do a final reflection.
This is the left one. This is the right hand. So we're coloring the tops of the fingers to look like the nail polish, but we start on the left.
Joey's. He's got ten, nine. I'm here for a second, and what our target was, what we're learning today. I can break numbers into smaller numbers. Give me a thumbs up if you did that at your table. Very good. So that's just a flavor for some of the videos that we've been doing.
I'm going to wrap up our presentation by talking about our next steps for both the remainder of the school year and next school year. We've been working on creating bottom lines for teachers collaboratively with Justin Dussie and Bob Testa. These expectations are aligned with burn-in strategies for improvement, and they include standards for professional practice, classroom management, and instruction in reading, writing, and math. Also included is a teacher's checklist so they can assess where they are with those bottom lines. And these bottom-line documents are going to be rolled out at the next staff level meetings, our staff meetings, by Justin and Bob in coordination with the building principals at all the elementary schools. Another thing we're working on, and we'll continue this year and next year, is collaborating to strategically plan professional development. It incorporates a lot of different initiatives. We have been designated as district coaches by the state, and I think you mentioned it before, in this role. We've attended a series, there's five sessions or modules for English on the Arts and for math. We've attended the first two modules, and we will go to the other three as they arise. The expectation is that we'll take the information that we learn, and we will communicate it, we will guide teachers, and we will embed our new learning into professional development for next year. Because we will be complete with our implementation guides by the end of the school year, what we intend to do for next year is to fine-tune the instruction of, the delivery of that instruction. We definitely are highlighting some of the things that are in both our bottom-line documents and that we know are important for readers and writers workshop, including how to confer with students in reading and writing, and doing interactive read-alouts. And math will focus on the standards of mathematical practice that are embedded within the Ureka resource that Jen had spoke of. We do plan to continue to model lessons, but as we've said before, we hope to build our digital library, our videotaping, and hoping that teachers will be willing to have their lessons videotaped as well so that we can build that capacity. We are continuing to work on those implementation guides. We will take teacher's input, starting this summer with the Summer Curriculum Academy, and make changes that they suggest of things that, you know, they think could be tweaked to make them better. And we'll continue to do that next year. We're also working with Justin in completing a large book order to make sure that the libraries for the students for next year, the classroom libraries, are full of just great books for the students and have the best books available, the Mentor Texts and the Trade Books that support our implementation goals. Finally, Jeff Bertlastis just recently to start working on building an academy for new teachers. He asked us to develop resources and a program of study along with Justin and Bob focused on classroom management, which is a domain that the teachers will be working on from September through February. I think we're going to be helping deliver that instruction, and that will switch to actual instruction will be another theme I think they've worked on for the second half of the year. So in conclusion, I think that you've heard and seen that we've been focused and will continue to focus on the Board of Education Goal Number Two, which is to improve achievement of every student in Vernon, respecting curriculum, assessment, and instruction. Are there any questions, based on the information that we presented to you tonight?
It's very obvious you put a lot of effort into your project so far. What safeguards do you plan on implementing to be sure that the teachers take advantage of all the resources you put together and, you know, and all the hard work? So just going to libraries, you know, budget for that, so that it uses continual resources?
We attend grade level meetings monthly, so we're getting in front of all teachers on a regular basis, so we're able to go through some of those resources. And we also show them that it's a two-way street, so if they have something that's really good, they can send it to us. We've even taken pictures of student work in different classrooms that might be used in other classrooms across the district. So we're really getting good buy-in from the teachers. They're very excited about it. We've received excellent positive feedback. We feel like there's a lot of momentum going forward to keep it going. We, I'm just going to speak to that as well. In the bottom lines that we've been working with, Justin and I have been creating, we'll address some of those, I guess you could say, concerns, perhaps, on what are some of the professional responsibilities?
responsibilities of the teachers and making sure that they're utilizing the Vernon Public Schools implementation guides and curriculum.
Realizing that people learn differently and so on, that certain teachers, although they've been in the system for a number of years and have done their work, is there any methods in place to see, is there an expectation if you've spent a certain long time utilizing resources or is that fully optional or whatever?
Because we're not evaluative, that's not really our role, so part of our role, I think, is just to build the relationships with the teachers so that they feel comfortable working with us. And by attending the grade level meetings, I think that's been helpful. Each of us have focused on two different grade levels, so we've gotten to know those teachers well, and so that's, that's more of our role, so we kind of take the evaluation piece out of it.
Thank you.
Well, maybe some of the evaluation piece needs to come to you because as board members, we are interested in seeing full implementation, not just resources available that don't get used. And like you were saying, you have early adopters, you have eventual adopters, and you have non-adopters. And guess what we're after? That percentage that either for one reason or another doesn't get with your program. So how can we help you ensure that that happens?
If I may just add one thing, part of the development of these units for the teachers includes common assessments. And so if the three of us are supposed to be teaching second grade, all of our students are going to have the same assessment at the end of the unit. And then we are required in our building, our grade level teams to look at the results of that assessment. And so we're all responsible to make sure our students can pass those assessments. So building in common assessments, and that's K through 12. So if we're all teaching Algebra I, we're all using the same assessments to ensure that all of our students are getting the same curriculum. That's what a guaranteed curriculum is all about. We're guaranteeing that every child will have that curriculum. So the common assessments are very, very key to this.
Well, it's not the assessment of the student I'm concerned about, it's the assessment of the delivery individual that gets that product down to them. And so we're back up at the teacher level here. That's who I'm needing assurance that they will be taking advantage of these resources that are made available to them. And so it's not the kids that I'm asking about, it's the utilization of the various third grade teachers and whichever implementation guide you've created or resource tool that you constructed, they in fact get done, get utilized. So if you don't hold their feet to the fire, they mean the staff members, then who will?
If I may, one more time, please, Mrs. Sues, I'm sorry. Since we're all required, the students are all required to learn the same material to have the end product, it behooves the teachers to work collaboratively to get there. You're correct, we may have some veteran teachers who have some incredible strategies in their pocket that are not written down in the implementation guide, and I think as Mrs. Sues just said, that's, that teacher needs to share those. There is no one right way, otherwise everybody would be doing it. For children to learn to read, to compute, to do all those kinds of things. And so, so as we go through this, we are using the best research, but the real result is the students learning, and that's what we want to happen in the end. And so if we're using different strategies and my students are learning more than your students or vice versa, I wanna know what you're doing so that my students, and I might try that, but maybe my students' learning style is a little different than yours, some of them, some of mine might benefit from some of your strategies. So it really is a collaborative process, but the end result is the student learning, and that's what we want to ensure is that the students are all learning. There's a lot of ways to do it. I often say to the teachers, I don't care if you stand on your head, do a curricula or a somersault. Figure it out, figure out what way this child is going to learn and so can access the curriculum just like every other child.
I was just going to say, I think our role of being non-evaluators is a good one. We talked about, you know, maybe that we need to get an evaluator to sign, but I think teachers see us as a very safe resource and the, you know, the evaluation process, and we are, you know, a resource recommended by principals, and we have established those working relationships, as Jen said, we're focused primarily on two grades and go up to those grade level meetings, and we've established those initiatives, and people feel very comfortable coming to us, and we're constantly referred to as a resource for those teachers that may not be meeting the same goals as other grade level colleagues. And I think they do, teachers do come to us for assistance.
These units as well are part of a bigger picture within the district. We collaborate with other teachers and we coordinate with other initiatives going on in the district. So when we have these units, they also have, you know, schedules of professional development that we're tying into that. They have their goals, their SLOs for C that they can tie into that. We have our bottom lines that also tie into that. So it is a coordinated effort, it is not done in isolation, so it really helps get everybody on board and moving forward.
I have a question. Do the principals come to any of your PDs or watch a model lesson or go to the grade level meetings so they can be on the same page since they are the ones who are evaluating the teachers?
We have had some of that happen over the school year, that principals have come to some of the professional development and some of the training sessions that we've offered.
And stuff like that, really, it's not on an absolute consistent basis, it depends by building their availability, but also it's going on at those times.
I was just thinking, Mr. Kemp's saying, who's gonna hold the teachers' seats higher? It's the principal's job to do that, so you want them to be on the same page as well?
I think we're trying to work towards making sure that we're all working together in a cohesive model, so I think that's something that we always, as a district, can get better at, so hopefully moving forward, we'll just continue to collaborate together.
Just a question on your implementation guides. Are the language on this one, is it based upon the readers and writers workshop in Singman, is Lucy Cockings narrate, does the narrator's? Is that what I was seeing up there? Couldn't see it all, couldn't read it quickly. Is that the model you're using for those?
Yes, we have moved towards a readers and writers workshop model, and we also have a few, we made copies if anyone would like to take a closer look at a sample implementation guide, but, so we're working with teachers to be able to deliver their instruction using a mini lesson and as well as then their independent practice and allowing teachers to confer with their students and meet with small groups, and it's very differentiated. So that's the model that we're basing these implementation guides off with.
So it's user-friendly for the teachers to go from their, their, that curriculum, but the program you're using to step into the implementation guidance, correct?
We're really trying to encourage teachers that we're using everything as a resource, anything that you have in your classroom is a resource. So you don't, you don't, we wanna encourage our teachers not to just draw the page of their teacher's manual, but to really think about the students that are sitting in front of them and what do those students need. So kind of looking at it in a different lens as far as everything's a resource, and so we're, there's definite great ways and that we can utilize the resources that we do have in order to supplement or support the units that we're writing currently.
Okay, next question was the Ureka Math. Is that, is that something that enhances your current program that you're using for math? Is it an online resource or the, I don't know enough about that.
Sure. The Ureka Math is an online resource with modules for each grade level. You can print off copies, but it is available online. It is an additional resource that our teachers can use, and what we found is that Ureka Math was written brand-new with the Common Core. So it's not taking a program and then kind of trying to retrofit it or come up with a scope and sequence that is very cohesive for the students. So we looked through it, we spoke with them, we attended a training at another town in the state that's using it, and what we found was it was a very natural progression. It really had the rigor and the focus to allow our teachers to go deeply into concepts and really build that number sense and problem solver with our students.
Okay, last question, maybe it's not here, but is your anti-bullying curriculum that you're using, is that in conjunction with the Second Step program? That is it, that's what you're using currently?
You're not, yeah.
Second Step is in place? We know that's, yes, exactly. This is an additional resource that the teachers could also implement on top of Second Step. If they wanted further, if they were having more specific issues arising in their classroom, then they're able to bring in additional awesome things to really address what's happening.
Okay, and lastly, if I went on the website, would I be able to go in and play with your stuff or is it secure?
You can get to it through the vertical of the school. The, when you go to the kindergarten through grade 12, there's a link to the coaching connection.
Okay.
But anyone can have access to the website?
That's great because I know that we have gone, as a teacher, I have gone to other states and used a lot of the materials that are around the country that are great. And it's, it's really nice that you guys are sharing. It's good. Thank you.
Any else have any questions?
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Kim, you're on time, seven point two in Richmond and Gifted and Talented update.
Thank you, Mrs. Sues, this is a request that the board made, probably a month and a half ago. And Mrs. Lee, who is our teacher for Gifted and Talented for the district and resides at the middle school, is here with us, but we were looking at all Gifted and Talented for all levels, and so looking at any enrichment we might have. So Mrs. Marion, Ms. Marion is here as well to share our AP, ECE, and other offerings that our students have at the secondary level. So I'll turn that over to her.
We have a PowerPoint. Hi, good evening, I'm here with Kim Marion from the high school to talk about what the Gifted and Talented and Enrichment Opportunity Program has looked like this year. First, I wanna talk to you a little bit about what giftedness means. Gifted individuals comprise about five to seven percent of the general population, and when we talk about giftedness, we talk about an IQ of one, better, or greater. In Vernon, we use the Triad of Identification, which was developed by Dr. Joseph Menzouli. He's one of the primary researchers of giftedness, and we're very fortunate that he is at Urecon, and I've been able to meet with him and take some classes there, talk with Dr. Reyes and Dr. Menzouli, who are worldwide experts in the field. The Triad of Identification talks about high ability, high creativity, and high task commitment. And when you have those three pieces together, when you have a gifted individual, usually you have those three pieces together. In their packet, I believe that I also sent along a little chart that talks about the difference between a bright student and a gifted student. Not every student who is a high achiever or a bright student is gifted. So we might have students that are performing very highly in school, but might not necessarily be gifted. Maybe they're just very hardworking or they're, you know, they're obviously bright in some way. Giftedness goes to another level. Research tells us that bright and gifted students, whether their IQ is 130, you know, close to 130, above 130, or below 130, around that range, that they work better and learn better if there are three scenarios in their learning environment. They work better in homogeneous grouping rather than grouping within a class. So they work better in classrooms specifically at their learning level. They work and learn better in accelerated class, and they work and learn better when their curriculum is compacted. In other words, they've been tested out of things that they already know, and they're specifically focusing on things that they need to learn. So that's just some of the research that has come out of gifted education. In Vernon, we identify using several different ways. Identification was mandated by the state four years ago, and that's when we began identifying in Vernon. And over the last three years, we've tried to get more and more specific about how we identify. We can always identify using the students' IQ scores if we have, some students come to us and they already have an IQ profile, and if their IQ is 130 or above, they're automatically identified as gifted. But we don't routinely IQ test our students across the board, so then we use other ways for identifying. Up until now, we've had CMT scores, and if a student has three fives on the CMT, or in small cases, if they have two fives and a four, but their fives are very high or their four is close to five, we've used that as one data point. We also require very strong teacher recommendation. The teacher has to give us some comments about how they're learning, their ability, and all of those things. We look at grades, we look at their class achievement, and we look at the results from their universal screeners. And last year, Patty Gill and I added a piece, which is called Six, the Scales for Identifying Gifted Students, which is a scale evaluation that's filled out by the teachers and the parents, and then all that data is pulled together. Both teachers gain peer minutes, and even students can nominate themselves for evaluation. Right now at RHS, we have 64 identified students. At the CMS, we have 40, and we have six at the elementary level. When I say identified, it means that we've gone through the process and given them that label and coded them into our path as being gifted and or talented. We have 16 students right now that are currently under evaluation for identification at the middle school level. I've been following them all year, you know, evaluating the grades, evaluating comments from teachers, and some of them, I feel, really will get that identification very soon. In Vernon, we're also part of the Connecticut Association of the Gifted and then at the National Association of Gifted Children, and that's helped us because they send new resources and they've actually come to our school system to put out presentations. Finally, about a year and a half ago, I joined with other area districts, Canton and West Hartford, Manchester, Windsor Locks, Windsor, and some other districts in the area, and we created something called the Gifted Symposium. I get together with about 10 different districts. We were getting together last year every other month, and we would come together to talk about ways that we can make each of our school systems better in terms of making opportunities, more opportunities available to our gifted and high achieving students. Unfortunately, this, the district that was originally hosting the symposium stopped doing that, so I have volunteered to do that in Vernon. So I, Vernon will be the host for the Gifted Symposium starting on May 19th. We actually have several school districts coming to the CMS to meet with meeting with other people, and we're going to be talking about ways to move forward, especially because we're not going to have CMT scores. Some districts rely very heavily on CMT scores as part of the identification process, but we're not going to have those in the future, so we'd like to have some very good data, especially if it's not cost-effective to IQ test every single student in our school district. Although I talk a lot about identifying labeling students, the fact of the matter is that enrichment is available universally to all of our students, whether or not they have that labeling. It's not necessary for them to be identified in order for them to participate in many of our beginning classes and many of our enrichment opportunities. Students who have an interest or demonstrate ability can participate. They can talk to the teachers, they can come to me, they can take classes at the high school, they don't need to be able to take any of those. They don't need to be able to take any of those high level classes. Teachers and parents can recommend a student for some sort of enrichment activity or an enrichment class. One of the things I put together last year and this year are two websites that are available to anyone who accesses our school district website. One is the Gifted and Talented page. We're in our third, third year of the Gifted and Talented page. At the top, I always have my curriculum links, that's a different page, which I'll show you in a minute. I add information about things that are currently going on, either in the district or in the state. Most of the things that I add are cost, you know, cost effective, so parents can take advantage of that. I recently took out the information about MIT and the Yale splash. Those were events, that's where our students at BCMS actually went to, and I know it because I was there and I saw them participating. Students for $40 to spend a day at Yale or at MIT, actually two days at MIT and a day at Yale, taking all sorts of higher level classes. And I was, I was really pleased to see some of our BCMS kids there. So we do have this Gifted and Talented page. On the right side, we have our procedures for identification forms that parents can fill out or teachers can fill out. One of the things that I added to this page is something that I began at BCMS this year, which is the Mensa Challenge. The Mensa Challenge took a break for about a month, but every week I have a challenge out for students to participate in. Sometimes they have a specific topic, like sports, or words, or math. And sometimes there's just, you know, there are just higher level brain teasers. But this is available to any member of the district. They can go in, they can do, you know, some sort of, you know, their little mental test. Students who hand it in to me get a little prize. There's a little raffle at the end of every week and students can, and a lot of students actually participated. They never handed in, but they participated in it just for fun, and teachers do as well. I had taken a break from the Mensa Challenge for about a month because I thought, oh, maybe kids aren't really interested. And then over the last week since vacation, so many kids came up to me and said, where is that Mensa Challenge? Why don't you have it out anymore? And I immediately threw Mensa Challenge money out there for them. At the bottom of our Gifted and Talented page, I have lots of resources for parents, local opportunities, websites that you can visit, books, things to do, internet resources for parents with gifted children, programs, museums. I try to update the Gifted and Talented page once every couple of weeks. If I know that something is coming up, I put it out immediately. This past weekend, there was an event in Canton called Minds in Motion, put out by Connecticut Association of the Gifted. I sent a letter home to all of our identified students, and I put the information on the website. Coming up, there's another one in Plainfield. So I try to keep it pretty current, and I, when I update the website, I usually also send a letter home to the parents of the kids who are identified saying, hey, you know, this is coming up, check it out, more information is on the website, or the information is attached. Another page that I put together this year, the Curriculum Links page, also available to anyone from home. It includes links for enrichment in math, social studies. And then links, I've tested all of them myself, I've gone into all of them myself and played around with them, made sure that they're real things that have some value. Science, language arts, word languages in health. And I actually also added in a little bit about bullying because I know that's something that concerns every student, but sometimes I think that bright students feel like they get singled out a little bit. So I added a piece about that. So I'm pleased with those two pages, and I wish that more people would use them. So I think I need to do a better job of making them public. I know that we changed the location of them in our website. They weren't always easy to find. Trying to figure out what tab to put them under, we're just gifted education early following our website. So I think one of my goals for the coming years to make those pages more usable and more, just more available to people. Now, Kim Maranen, this year, we're going to talk a little bit about RHS. As I said, you don't have to be identified to participate in a lot of these advanced level classes that we have. At the high school level, we have a lot of college level classes. You know that we have the College Touring Pathways Program, which includes agricultural education, health, business and opposite technology, EC, Early Childhood Education, Communications, Criminal Justice, Fire Technology and Technology Education. Fortunately, students can take these classes and leave high school with some college credit. Did you want to look down at the post?
No, these are just, again, part of the community college network. So we are articulated with Manchester Community College, it's in Up Tuck, and also Three Rivers. And these are actually free courses at Rockville High School for students.
We also have our Early College Experience Program. And I know that that's expanded over the last couple of years. We have at least, well, right now, we have 15 EC classes offered. 86 students participated in 2012 to 2013, and 111 students in 2013 to 2014.
The only thing I would add there is, it's just, we're really proud of the expansion that we're making in that area. I believe that even the agriculture classes, just a couple of classes that they're able to articulate with as well. So we're going to even expand into their department a little bit more than we have already. I made sure that you received the chart that we received at our last conference showing the growth that Rockville High School has made over the past six, seven years.
So this is the chart that we have to make up it. You can see that we're the blue line. And if you compare us to the talent counting, we are soaring beautifully. Also, in AP classes, I know that one of you was speaking, she talked about AP classes and how the students are getting there right now to take those AP exams. In 2013, 14, we offered AP Studio Art, Language and Composition, Calculus, Music Fundamentals, and United States History. And students also often choose to take AP exams in classes that are not offered, but which they feel they have enough, enough knowledge, such as music theory or statistics. I know that some of the students in the statistics class are planning to take the AP exam. Anything else you want to talk about? On top of that, there is, there are so many opportunities at Rockville High School for enrichment. At the top of that list, I added the Ask Schools Match Wits team. A lot of people don't know that we actually have that team. We're in our fifth year of Ask Schools Match Wits. We began the team with five students five years ago. My son actually began the team because he loved this program so much. It's a trivia competition that has been around for over 50 years. The program is filmed at Westfield State University and broadcast on channel 57. Our first year, we lost, we lost our first match. The next year, we won, the third year, we tied. Last year, we won, and this year, we won, and we won big. We actually made it to the finals. If you would look at the broadcast right now, it lists Rockville High School, a sport out of 50 teams. But of course, I have a little bit of advanced information. I know that we went to the finals, and I know how we did. And you'll have to tune in in June to figure out whether we made it all the way or not. But we were so, so proud of our students. The team actually is very informal. Mr. Gerpott, my high school, is the liaison with the folks at Westfield State University. But the team really just comes to my house, has pizza and brownies and juice, and practices with the Mauch League family team. And just doing that on their own and having their own passion and initiative, they have been able to be born this year in the giant competition. We're really, really proud of them, we have some really bright students. Another star at the high school is our band and musical program. You know that we have marching dance, symphony band, jazz band, a band. And a very active winter front line. And if you've ever had to have a meeting in the studio at Rockville High when winter front line is practicing, you know that they are very robust and very loud and very big. I think you would say, if you've ever attended a musical program at the high school, that is one of our greatest enrichment opportunities. We have yearbook, book club, drama club, FFA, honor societies in French, German, and Spanish, the Green Team, which has won some beautiful awards, media club, link crew, literary arts magazine, all of those things that are listed up there. This weekend, I myself attended two Rockville High School writing events. On Friday, we had three Rockville High School students who went to the semifinal Fresh Boys Poetry Competition and performed beautifully. In fact, they were so beautiful that the principal of the School for the Arts in Hartford, the magnet school for the arts, has said that he will pay for a bus to come to Rockville High to collect our writing students to go present at his magnet school. So I was very proud when I stood there and I heard him say that. On Sunday, I then followed and traveled with four high school students to the Youth Art Home in Lexington, Mass, where four of our students received awards for their poetry and their fiction writing. While I was at the Youth Art Home, Vicki Norland was on the lead up the Bushnell with the students, two students from the high school who were finalists in the slumming competition. So our writing program is another enrichment jewel at our high school. And if you have anything to do with any of those programs and you see the quality of our kids, you know that they have these things available, available to them at high school, and we are making use of them, and that gets me very, very proud. Talking about the middle school, there's, during the school day, even though our classes, we have gone away from leveling, one thing that is state leveled is math. We have accelerated math available to seventh graders. Students are chosen, I think, by sixth graders in several criteria. We have algebra in eighth grade, once a bunch of students have to meet certain criteria in order to qualify them. For art, we have Epic Art. In sixth grade, all students are invited to apply. There's a portfolio process where they have to complete a piece in front of the art teacher, they have to bring in some artwork, they have to write a reflection. But that's an enrichment opportunity for seventh and eighth graders. Epic Art is a program that provides the students with opportunities for higher level art, but also community involvement through their art. This year, the seventh graders are hoping to raise enough money with their art to purchase a cannon that will be given to a family in their, their world conflict to change their sets of women. A few years ago, the Epic Art students created a tree that went to the Oz with Ethneum, and it was auctioned off to raise money. So every year, the Epic Art students try to do something with their art that benefits the community in some way, their art community in the area, or our community worldwide. One of the things that we often talk about is the United Unified Arts classes at the middle school. Those are enrichment opportunities. The students in those classes, whether it's sewing, or technology, or music, or cooking, have always opportunities to move ahead and do more than just the project that's assigned to the whole class. Finally, we have, once again, a robust program of being course at the middle school. I know that Mrs. Cook routinely offers enrichment opportunity to the being students anytime that she feels that they're progressing, you know, at an advanced level. And we have, you know, select chorus, select band, jazz band, all of those things available. And finally, we have teacher differentiation within the classroom. Although not every teacher is doing this, I know that quite a few teachers are protesting with students, figuring out where they are falling, and then compacting the curriculum or offering them choice or level assignments. One of the things that I pride myself on offering at the middle school, because my job is mostly at the middle school, I sit at the middle school, is providing enrichment schoolwide for the, for all the students, whether or not they are in a small classroom or whether or not they are identified. We had an amazing Veterans Day assembly, which been translated into curriculum. We had some teachers using that assembly to then change their curriculum or add to their curriculum. We had a geography bee with 27 participants, a spelling bee with 53 participants, a Pi Day Math Bee, the first time we had a Math Bee, 65 participants, and those students were amazing. Also, the audience that came to the Math Bee was so excited that they sat in an audience with paper and pen trying to answer the questions at the same time, it was really wonderful to watch. We recently had an author visit with Neil Shuston and Eric Delphine. And when they started their presentation, they talked a lot about the inventor Nikola Tesla. And I think it's very exciting about talking about electricity and inventions. I'm hoping that this coming year, we'll have two author visits. One of them is an author that many of our students have read, Sharon Braper. I'm working on that right now. We've had a drama presentation from RHS come to the school to talk about school stereotypes, the Mensa Challenge, as I mentioned. During advisory, we've had some enrichment opportunities with the Advisory Olympics and the Egg Drop Challenge. And then we have lots and lots of academic clubs at the middle school. We have book club, Math Olympias, book fills, which are run, Math Counts, run by Mrs. Semperbont for seventh and eighth period math, Episcopianos. And we have lots of social and service clubs that offer enrichment. We have a very robust animated club, Kate Decorated, Friday Friends, Newspaper Club, Really for Life, Sewing Student Council, Yearbook. So students who want to stay busy at the high school can. All of these clubs that I mentioned, the one drawback is that they mostly all need after school. So if a student doesn't have transportation, that limits their availability. Continuation for BCMS, our Bermuda students, our eighth graders who qualify to attend the Bermuda workshop are having practicing with their underwater swimming and are currently getting ready to go in May. That's an amazing enrichment opportunity where the students spend a week at the Bios Institute in Bermuda. And it's science from seven in the morning to a long in the pocket, and they're very busy. And while they're preparing for that, they're also doing many, many enrichment activities, not only practicing the pool, but doing research, writing reports. For the first time this year, we had students who participated in Connecticut History Day. Cindy McManaman and I, she's a social studies teacher, seventh grade. She and I went to a demonstration at the Old State House about Connecticut History Day. And when we looked at the map of all of the districts that participated in Connecticut History Day, there was a big white blob in the middle of this red map, and that white blob was Vernon, meaning that we didn't have anyone participating and haven't had anyone participating in a long time. And she and I thought that it was about time we changed that. We offered the opportunity to the whole school, 10 brave souls to participate in it. Out of those 10 brave souls, eight decided that they could not continue. It's a very, more intensive, independent study. We had two students who completed projects and went to competition. And it was very, very fun, exciting and fun. And I think the students that actually completed the projects and were judged got a lot of pride. Our goal is for next year to have 10, 10 students actually go and compete and have completed projects. Writing contests are something that I offer schoolwide. Whenever I have a good writing contest, I send it out to all the lone jobs teachers. And I also announce it in my morning announcements. For Veterans Day, we had 18 participants in the Veterans Day Parade Essay Contest. One of our students was the state winner, which was very exciting to see the big banner there in the middle school right at the front of the parade. We have often participated in the Connecticut Students Writers Project, which is, which comes out of UConn. We have 24 participants this year. Sherri Evans and I have also created an extra essay project called This I Believe Project. Students have to write a personal piece about a belief, and then we videotape them. And this is going to develop into an actual video that we're going to present. We have 11 participants for that. And finally, the Law Day Essay Contest. Some students submitted their entries personally, they didn't come through, so I don't know exactly how many. And then, as I mentioned, we have enrichment in the arts, Epic Art. We've had composer visits. We now have a group that's combined with high school and the middle school called the Saxor Food and Us. Our high school students come down and they play music with our middle school students, select chorus, jazz band, and drama club. I put in there sports because the giftedness is not just academic, and it's not just artistic. It's also sports giftedness, and some of our students take, take advantage of that opportunity. Career Day is coming up very soon, where students are going to have a chance to talk to different people about their different careers. And we recently just had two Multiply Your Auctions field trips, which are seven field trips to UConn, we have both boys and girls going to those. Plans for the future. This is, this is a more difficult topic. One thing that I'd like to have at BCMS and hopefully district wide is more whole school events. We're very blessed that this year, we can get all of the BCMS students and staff into the auto car room, and we can meet as a school so that we can plan whole school events. I'd like to have more author visits. I've already started planning, actually, six months ago, I started planning the next Veterans Day Assembly with some curriculum connections. Veterans Day Assembly with some curriculum connections. Feeding Children Everywhere was an event that we had, not this past year, but the previous year, which we connected with the social studies and science curriculum on food preservation and the lack of food and water around the world. We would like to have a STEM fair, because we've had the Geography Bee and the Spelling Bee Math Bee. The science teachers are now feeling a little jealous and neglected, and they would like to have some sort of STEM or math or science bee. We're going to continue having geography and math events. And one thing that I'd like to host, I would love to, in connection with the Connecticut Association of Gifted is a Minds in Motion event, just like Canton is hosting and kind of hosting. Some group opportunities, things that are in development right now. I piloted this year something called SOAR Academy. Jason Maybough and I talked about having students during their flex block be able to leave their flex block if they don't need to use their flex block for homework or extra help, be able to leave their flex block and get some sort of a special enrichment opportunity during that time. We ran into an issue where we didn't really have the staff to do that. The flex block teachers are already doing other things with students that they have. So Joanne Stadens-Martin and I decided we were going to pilot it. We were going to come up with activities that we could do within the flex blocks that we already have. We would offer it to the students that we have, and any small group that wanted to do that would do it. It didn't work very well, unfortunately, because as a flex block teacher, when you have a group of, let's say, 20 students, some of them might need help with their work, some of them might need to be sent somewhere. And when you're trying to teach a group of five or six students a very intensive topic, you are constantly getting interrupted. So our pilot showed us that we really need to have teachers that are specifically set up to take those enrichment students and work just with them on whatever their trauma are and not getting interrupted. That is very valuable information, because I think it's going to guide our scheduling for this coming year, so that we do have those designated times and spaces for students who are enrichment. I mentioned Connecticut History Day. We'd like to have a lot more students participate in that. We're going to start earlier in the year getting them ready, because it really is a very intensive individual competition, and students really have to be motivated. And if they don't have a lot of help at home, or they don't have a lot of time at home, or they don't have somebody who can really bring them around to do the primary source research, I think those students will fall behind. Math Olympias will continue, but I would like to continue it within the school day. Two years ago, I had 17 students in Math Olympias, which is a sixth grade enrichment math curriculum. It takes place after school. So I had 16 or 17 students this year. I only had seven, because several of the kids who wanted to do this had sports, and it interferes with their sports schedule. If I can give this or do this or work it out so that we can do it within the school day, I think we would offer this to many, many more students. And I've been in contact with the sixth grade math teachers to figure out how this could be done. One way would be that I could pull for 20 or 30 minutes every six days any students that were recommended for Math Olympias. So I, so one day a week, let's say, on day three, if you know how the middle school schedule works, I would pull any student for enrichment during their math class, either within the class as a separate group or in another room. So this is something that we've been discussing and developing, I would really like to offer, because we have accelerated math in seventh grade and algebra in eighth grade. I would really like to offer something in sixth grade for our math students who want the extra challenge. And I think it needs to happen during the school day, so that we're not missing out on kids who want to participate because they don't have a ride or because they're in a sports zone or after school activity. Book Club is in its third year. We read higher level texts, a lot of times high school texts, some of the same books that are being read at the high school book club. And it's a student and adult book club, so we have very engaging, high-level conversation. This year's topic was overcoming obstacles. We've read about Mount Everest, we've read about, we're going to be reading about Hurricane Katrina, I did a reunion on the Holocaust, so many, many different topics. The book that we're currently reading is about a student that was born with a facial deformity and how he has been able to navigate middle school. And my plan this year was to have or begin a chess and Scrabble club. I haven't done it yet, because I haven't had time yet, but I'm hoping that before the year is out, I will actually get some students together to play chess or Scrabble. We have quite a few chess players at the middle school. And finally, I've been in discussion with Mrs. Norland about having a joint writing club with the RHS writers. The students at the high school are a great resource for writing students, and I think that they would be, they would make a great connection with our writers at the middle school. I know that the RHS writers are coming to visit very soon, they're going to present, and my suggestion is that while they are at the middle school, our VCMs students present to them as well and start forming that relationship. Plans for the future for the district as a whole. We're going to need to keep developing our identification procedures, especially finding more data points to use for these students that we're not missing students. We're going to, I plan on continuing to host the Gifted Symposium, and I'm hoping that the connection and the relationship with other districts will give us more information that we can use to make ourselves better. I'd like to host more events in conjunction with the Connecticut Association of the Period. And I'd like to expand, to offer more small group enrichment at the elementary level. I spend a lot of time at the middle school. I go to the elementary schools when I'm called, when I'm asked, or when people ask me for resources, but I don't spend a lot of time at the elementary level, and I think that's, that's something that's missing out of what I do, and I'd like to expand that. One of the things that I'd like to offer at the elementary level is some sort of foreign language program like a Rosetta Stone. I haven't quite figured out how that will work, but I think that would be a very exciting and rich offering for some of our fourth and fifth grade students. At VCMs, we'd like to begin a National Engineer honors society. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. And this year, I've actually put together with another teacher at the middle school, an eighth grade tutoring program. We have some of our eighth grade students tutoring some of our sixth grade students in math and science, and that would fall very beautifully into the community, you know, piece of a National Engineer Society. And finally, always the question that I deal with, which is that parents of gifted students want more accelerated classes and more pull-out opportunities during the school day, not just after school. So this is something that I think about all the time, even in the middle of the night when I can't go back to sleep, how to offer more for our students. And I think that's, that's pretty much the nutshell of what I do and what I think about and what I hope to have for our students. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, I'd like to thank you for all your efforts. It's near and dear to my heart. And the cloud of history that tends to sleep at night, I don't know how you do it in a normal 24-hour career or what could you do. But as a general statement, I think burn needs to show, showcase our efforts in the area of advanced education as a selling point, both as a board of education, so that people stay in schools, that we keep the funds within the district. All the stuff that is offered is amazing. There's some stuff there that I wasn't aware of that existed. So I am blown away. I think it's wonderful. What can we do to help you more? I guess is my, because I think so much is, don't write yourself for special education, but I think greater opportunities need to exist also for students with higher level ability. Wondering what you still?
And I feel very strongly about that. One of the things that I, we talked about this weekend with the principal from the Arts Academy, was that we don't do a good enough job of selling ourselves, and that's an unfortunate thing. We have all of these things that we offer, that are offered at all of these other schools that say, oh, we have a gifted program, we have Math Olympias. So we, we have Math Counts. So we, we have Model UN. We have that. So we have all of these amazing things that other schools advertise so well, and I think we should change ourselves when we don't say what we really have. When the Connecticut Association of Gifted came last year and presented to the parents, and they had this lineup on, you know, on projectors showing things that you can do in our district to offer enrichment opportunities, pretty much everything they had on their slide, we already do. So I think our image is one thing that has to change, but I also think we also need to continuously grow our program, and we need more money for the program. I mean, we actually need a bigger budget, I guess I would say. When I look at a district like West Hartford, and their gifted budget, not even counting salaries, is $46,000. I'm jealous. I want that $46,000, because I would be taking our kids to math field trips and science fairs, and I mean, we could just do so much more. And I think we do a lot with what we have already. I think we're amazing with what we have already, but I'm greedy, I guess.
Actually, I have several questions, so bear with me. You mentioned that the, the one standard for identification of as gifted and talented really is the IQ test, and that conversely, we don't IQ test our students. You said that that was a cost factor, and I was curious, you know, what does it cost to IQ test a student?
Well, it's not just a cost factor, but it's a time factor. I don't know what it costs to test individually a student, because that would probably make a difference over where, about where or who tests them. But I know in some districts, there are tests that are given across the board at certain grade levels for every single student that will give us, you know, some data points and some measures of where they are. And we don't have that. I'm happy to get that information for you if you want. I really do not know what the cost is. But to individually IQ test every student, when we're talking about thousands of students, I just think that as a time factor, I'm not sure that we would be able to do it. But there are other things that we can use to give us ideas of where students fall.
Okay, I was just, I am actually curious, because if, if we use that as a measure for students who were nominated or identified, I was just curious what the cost would be, especially since you're losing the CMT as a data point for identification.
We started to look into other kinds of data that we can use, other kinds of tests that we can use that maybe we can apply to one grade level, let's say, give it to all fourth graders or to all third graders and fifth graders. And I've already started to meet with other, other districts who do these kinds of things to find out what has worked for them. We obviously need to have that in place for next year. So time is of the essence with that.
So you did mention that once they're labeled, they're actually labeled in the system, what does that label mean in terms of the student?
It simply means that when you go into their I-Pass record, the way most teachers do to look up grades, that there's a little spot on there that says gifted and talented, identified, and we give them the number, it appears to be the number one. So if there's a number one, it means that somebody has gone through the identification process and said, yes, they meet that criteria.
Okay. Are there opportunities available to the students identified as gifted and talented that aren't available to the general school population?
That's a great question. Every student that's identified, especially at the middle school, receives a letter from me every four to six weeks with new opportunities that have come up that they can participate in. Now, the question is, do they take advantage of those opportunities? Some do and some don't. Some students who are identified are very happy, just doing very well in their classes, getting it in, and not doing anything extra, you know, they're happy that way. And some students who are identified want more all the time. They want to participate in the writing contest or the STEM contest, they want to ask their teacher for, you know, something extra, they want to go further and beyond. I provide the opportunity, but I don't make them take the opportunity. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. You had talked about the fact that the students identified as gifted and talented typically perform better in a homogenous classroom setting, and that's obviously not what we have in the modern public school system.
We do at the high school. We do at the high school. I mean, we do have some of our advanced level classes at the high school that I would say are more homogeneous in terms of ability.
Okay, fair. Is that something that we should be considering at the middle school level, too?
I feel very uncomfortable speaking to that, because we've just kind of moved away from, at the middle school level. And the research that I use is not the only research that there is, not to walk around what you just asked me. I do believe that it's very important that we at least keep our accelerated math classes, because students who are gifted in math really need to move at a more advanced pace. So in that kind of a class, I feel it's very important that the students have the ability to move as quickly as possible at their level in the math curriculum. In line of charts, if we use things like Readers and Writers Workshop, then we're giving those students differentiated opportunities in their reading level and the levels that they choose. So that's an important piece. And then, this is in our science classes, I see amazing differentiation going on, as well as in social studies. Mrs. Van Manen, who I just spoke to, who I just spoke about in terms of Connecticut History Day, if you go into her social studies class, when she gives out an assignment, she gives it at several different levels. She's very amazing at differentiating. Mrs. Wolfgang in science does the same thing. In fact, she came to me today and said, I have these students, they're constantly doing really well on their pre-test, and I know that they told me they don't want extra work, but we're signing a contract. What do you think, Mrs. Lane? I said, yes, you sign that contract, and you say to them, you've met this level, this is your level right now. So I know that although it's harder for those teachers, because they do have these varying levels, I know some teachers that are doing amazing work differentiating for their students. So we can do it. It's, it's harder, but we can do it.
Okay. What do we do about students that come either into district or back into district? So for instance, we're reclaiming, we feel like more magnet school students, things like that, where you haven't necessarily had the opportunity to observe them, say, sixth and seventh grade, and suddenly they're back in eighth grade, that kind of thing. How are we identifying?
The, I have a group of sixth students right now that I've been monitoring for the last year. If they left the district and come back, I still usually have the opportunity to look through their records and see how they've done. And sometimes when they come back, they come identified from the district where they've been. The teachers I find at the middle, especially at the middle school level, they get to know their students very well. We meet in team meetings on a regular basis, and if I have questions about how a student is doing, I find that I have the opportunity to go and say, look, you know, two years ago, we talked about this student, and you had said that, you know, we thought he learned differently, or she learned differently. How's the student doing now? What do you see? And sometimes the teacher will say, you know what, he or she has really maintained that standard. Or sometimes they'll say, I don't know, I just don't see it right now. So the discussion with their team teachers is extremely important to identifying a student. And sometimes teachers will email me and say, can you come and talk to me about this student? What do you think I need to do for this kid? You know, he's, he's way ahead, he seems bored, or he needs more. Or sometimes they'll say, you taught me this student was gifted, but they really don't want to do anything extra, and every time I push them, they sort of push back. What, what should we do about that? So I do both of those conversations.
Okay, and one last question. I didn't understand the chart. What was it referencing? You know, you had the lines, and they were very nice, but is it, what is it, number of students taking what?
The, the number of courses. So our number of courses have increased, and our number of students participating has increased.
So is it specific to ECE courses?
Yes, specifically the ones that you call.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I know that students can be identified as gifted and talented, but we are, we have no obligation to provide anything.
That's right.
Is there, and that, that really concerns me, that we're not addressing their needs as, as importantly as special needs. Is there anything, any movement, anything going on about requiring, addressing curriculum for gifted and talented students? When you talk, you're talking about in terms of the state, have we heard anything from the state? I have not. And when I've met with other teachers in, around the state, I haven't heard that imminently we are going to be mandated to provide services. When the Symposium comes to VCMs on the 19th, that is one of the questions that I actually have. When is it going to have the same weight as other special ed services? There are states in the United States that put a lot of funding into gifted and talented services. We are not one of them. We simply mandate identification. Some students have, you know, dual identification. They have gifted and talented identification and something else, and then those students benefit because they follow their special ed services in another way. way. But if you're strictly identified as gifted and/or talented, it's really what your district wants to provide for you. And some districts with lots of funds provide lots and lots of things. But I would say that most of the districts in Connecticut do pretty much what we do. They have some whole school enrichment, they have some small group enrichment, a lot of it after school. A few districts have some pull-on programs where maybe a fourth grade student might get pulled out of class for, you know, maybe forty-five minutes a week and receive, you know, a mind's emotion or, you know, some sort of an enrichment program. There is a school in Hartford, the Ranzilli Academy, that is a specifically gifted school. And the way that has come about is Dr. Ranzilli and some other folks thought it would be good to see what would a gifted school look like, how would it work? And the Ranzilli Academy has done very well. Students in Hartford are identifying very similarly to the way we identify, and then they're invited to go to the Ranzilli Academy. The compromise was made that these students, their CMT scores, their standardized test scores actually live at their homeschool so that when their homeschools are reporting their standardized tests, testing scores, they have not been depleted of those higher level scores. Does that make sense? Okay. So the Ranzilli Academy has been a giant success for the students that have an opportunity to participate in it. And it has not hurt their homeschools because their scores are still residing in their homeschools. But I happened to be with the principal of that academy over the past summer, and when she and I were having a discussion, she actually had her phone and she was receiving her CMT scores from the students in her school at that moment, and they were through a group. And she was very, very pleased. Every student at that school has the opportunity to take a oral language, and they do it through Rosetta Stone. They don't have the funding to have teachers in twenty different languages, but they have purchased Rosetta Stone, and all these kids are taking, I think, at least twenty-five different languages if they want to. They also have monthly, actually bimonthly, I think. I don't know anymore. But they have enrichment opportunities that the whole school can participate in. They have these events where they will have twenty different presenters, and students choose to go to each different presenter at each, you know, whatever is exciting to them, they will go to that presenter. So it will be a whole morning where the whole school gets to move around and go learn a new topic from twenty, ten, or fifteen different people. So they have a lot of whole school enrichment, they have a lot of different opportunities, and it's worked really well for them. And I'm very jealous. I want to have some of those things for our kids because I love our kids and they deserve it just as much, so.
If, if through your symposium, you collectively want to push efforts toward mandating certain services or whatever, certainly wouldn't attempt to speak with the board, but I would be interested to know about those possibilities. And maybe it could be a more discussion about growing our support in that direction. But I, nothing that we can initiate. I understand that through your symposium or your yet working, or whatever, if there, if there ever is an opportunity, maybe that's something that could be reported back to the board and options to. Just throw, throw our support behind.
I would be very happy to contact the state and also contact the other districts and discuss with the other districts, you know, how do we push the state of Connecticut to actually mandate some services? The question that follows right after that is, will they help us fund? Will they help us fund? Or will they mandate them, but say, your district has to fund them? And then you're sort of back to the same place where some districts have the availability to do that and some districts will struggle to do that. And then it's a balancing act, obviously, as it is with every important thing that we need to use to educate our children, both the high ones and the low ones.
Well, I should shout out and advocate for unfunding mandates.
Yes.
But I think it's important to state about gifted and talented students. So I would appreciate if the board doesn't want it. I would still appreciate knowing if there are opportunities.
I will definitely look into it, and I'd be happy to come back and report anything that I find, especially after May nineteenth, if you'd like.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much. Very informative, and we appreciate your attention.
Hey, we'd like to add a second question.
I move that the Board of Education approve the research study by new student Rachel Deorio at Center Road School, titled "Using Self-Modeling to Increase Compliance to Class Requests and Students' Qualifies."
Is there a second, Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Arg.
Where, I realize that reading the proposal that requires the consent of teachers and parents and all, was any of this discussed with teachers and parents that could be involved?
Mr. Dr. Driscoll is here with the student and Mrs. Buell, so I'm sure they can address those questions that Dr. Driscoll's student has been working at Center Road for the past year.
So I have on several occasions spoken to.
Right up to you. Thank you.
On several occasions that have spoken to the principal and the teacher and the autism program there, and they're all on board at the Magic Center for the past year and a half. So I know the staff and students pretty well, and we've been very supportive of the research study.
And frequently, frequently, we're supportive of these kinds of requests. I'm always concerned about, I would say, basically, what's in it for us? And it, it sounds like whatever benefits you find from your research could be applied in burn, so there really would be a benefit to participating in your, in your study.
Right. So video self-modeling is an intervention that's been effective with autism, but also other populations as well. So when I do my study at Center Road, I like to provide directions to interested staff members and training if they're interested. So intervention can stay at Center Road after I done with my study because it's been used not only with students with autism, but to decrease stuttering, to decrease tics, to decrease disruptive behavior in students with ADHD. So I think it's definitely a worthwhile intervention that Center Road would find useful.
And could we please have a report back to us when, when the project is completed?
Sure. I'd be happy to do so.
Again, I don't get to ask that. Do I need to make that in?
I'll make that. One second.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one question. I noticed it said that it would run from March until June. It's already the end of April, so I'm curious.
Great. So the timeline's changed a bit now that I'm presenting today. So I'm going to do some kind of preliminary stuff at the end of the school year, including getting consent and then choosing which teacher requests I want to target in my study to increase compliance. But the bulk of the study, I would like that to happen over the summer because most of the students with autism receive ESY summer services at Center Road.
Anybody else have any questions?
Okay, there's a motion on the board to approve the research study. All those in favor? Well, good luck, and we look forward to hearing your results.
Thank you.
Okay, now to eighty-one oh, Jeff and Business, eight point one, sending Rocket's graduation request.
Thanks, Mrs. Fisher. The Board, by law, they set graduation after April first. This is your first meeting after April first, so I would ask that you do so if there are any other.
No, sir.
For some reason, we don't have school. The graduation can remain on that day. They would have to make up time, however, afterwards and come in the next day. So I would ask that you set it for the last day of school, which is June sixteenth, it's a Monday. And Project Graduation does have their facility for that evening, so that's another reason they would like to have it that. So that's Mr. Rocket's recommendation.
I move that the Board of Education approve June sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Mr. Rocket High School graduation date.
Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any further questions, discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Okay, and eighty-two, Futures Education Report recommendations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Macar, Mr. Burt, and Mrs. Buell and I have been working on the recommendations. You have quite a lengthy document in front of you. There are, we've identified the recommendation, people who would be responsible for implementing that recommendation, a timeline, many, many of them for next school year. And of course, that's kind of scary when you put a lot of goals for one year. However, many of these things are things you can't put into place with not a lot of work. And so this is the plan before you. I'm not sure what the Board would want to do. I don't know what Mrs. Buell's there. I put no action required at this point. You can have a conversation about them, but we did provide you with this as was asked.
Well, I thought that the transportation and finance recommendations and action plans seemed, seemed pretty appropriate. The organization pieces, to be honest, I was, I was disappointed in. Not what I, not what I expected to see. It's a reconsideration of recommendations made. My thought was, what I expected was to see implementation commitment. And I didn't, I didn't see that. To commit that kind of money with the hopes of getting real information that would be usable in the system and then to simply, I'll give you, for instance, the viability of having the Director of Personnel, Human, Human Resources. And then the action is simply to discuss it with the superintendent and the Director of Personnel. I'm disappointed by that. So I, it's not what I expected to see, and I don't think it's a misunderstanding of my request. I think it's a watered-down version of the Futures Report, and I'm disappointed by it. I think that the, the recommendations of the Futures Report, one of them was very clear that the Director of Personnel, Human Resources is Fred Somet, that she cannot be effective. So to simply have discussions about what we're going to do, to me, doesn't seem appropriate. I think we all recognize that the expectation is too great, and the reorganization that took place at central administration was not effective and in some places was inappropriate. So to be determined and to simply have conversations, I just find that. The, a lot of money, spent a lot of money, and, which brings me to another question. That twenty-five thousand dollar commitment was made by the superintendent without the Board knowledge until after it took place. And I wonder how something like that takes, how that commitment takes place. We had, I'm assuming that there is a policy that covers that, but I haven't even found it. So an expenditure like that without the Board having input into it, I would, I'd like to know how that took place. And then we were assured that that expenditure would come back to us in dollars, assured that dollars would be saved. And I remember it being alluded to, a minimum of fifty thousand dollar savings, which would offset the expenditure. So.
Maybe there's a whole bunch of questions in that statement.
Okay, so I'll take you through, through the chair. The first question you had was about staffing. We do have a work in progress, staffing. Right now, we're struggling with a reduction in that half-time special ed administrator and trying to figure out how to get all of that work done. Part of that plan, which we did not include here, but we do have, is moving Mrs. Buell's position back, so regressing with all of the advancement we've had in special, excuse me, in human resources. That's certainly not what we want to do. And so it was purposeful not to include that plan here and say that it is a discussion because we are still trying to figure out how we can get all the work done. We've made such progress in the area of human resources in that department and have saved us incredible time, energy, all kinds of things. So, so yes, we certainly realize that, and we have, we have a staffing plan. Mrs. Buell, not prefer our entire staff, administrative staff, and went through every task that needed to be done by each administrator to see how we could do this. So the struggle is, you know, certainly the reduction of the half-time special ed administrator and trying to see how that can be done and will add cohesion to the department. And that is a huge, a huge struggle. The, and I think Mrs. Buell has stepped up to the table, too. The second question about how the expenditures were done, these are expenditures that we, that we do take on, anticipating, you are correct, that we will save that amount of money. We do it in terms of telephony, so the telephone system, electricity, energy, all of those kinds of things, that this is something that we do on a regular basis to save money, is to spend money, so that we can save that money and then continue to save it in the future. So those are things that we've always done across the board, is to figure out how we can do our jobs, do our jobs better. So yes, when we're, when we move forward and share the staffing plan with you, which we certainly do plan to do, I'm still hoping we're going to come up with a Plan B so that we don't have to eliminate the human resources aspect of that. And, you know, we, we do anticipate that we will be saving the amount of money that we said we were going to save. So this is the plan. Right now, very easy to do the hard, fast things, transportation, et cetera. But we didn't, we have not made those final decisions in terms of staffing because we are still struggling with those. But Mrs. Buell's staff, as I said, has done the Ovid's work in terms of identifying the tasks that need to be done, trying to figure out how we can cohesively support special education, K-12. How can we get the early elementary education piece in, the out-of-district piece, the SRBI and five oh four? There are many pieces to it, and we're trying to figure out how we do that. So that is absolutely not off the table. You were very quick to see that, obviously, but, you know, that is absolutely missing from this plan.
Need to follow up on what Michelle asked because we based our budget on some, some very specific savings that we felt we were going to receive as a result of this report. And in reading it, I'm not sure where that money's coming from. We reduced the special education budget because we anticipated saving money from the results of this report. And I'm, you know, there's some recommendations about making sure that we're recovering all the money that's due to us, and I guess that maybe is going to get us there, I hope, if that's true. But I'm sincerely worried that we have made a hole for ourselves that this particular engagement isn't do much to help us get out of.
In transportation, there are some savings that we will be able to realize immediately and in the future. There were a couple of others. There was one eliminating a bus at the high school. We met with the transportation department. They do not feel that's a feasible thing for us to do. So that was significant savings in the report. We don't think we can do that without changing the times at the schools and all of that. And I don't know if that's something the Board wants to tackle at this point, is to go into a three-tier system. And, but there are significant savings in terms of transportation, Medicaid, and there's one other, I can't remember what it was. But Mr. Macar also has that information. But you are absolutely correct, not as much as we have anticipated. But you are absolutely correct, not as much as we have anticipated.
Mr. Kim.
The sixth item in the spreadsheet in the area of transportation refers to the small buses being replaced with vans, and over on the right-hand side modifies student services recommended as appropriate, analyze current routes, et cetera. I don't understand, because in the report on page 14, it clearly states that if we do that, there's $43,056 to be saved, so why wouldn't we do that? I mean, what, so, what's the study? They're already telling us it's $43,000 in the, you know, in our pocket if we do it.
Through the chair. To Dr. Conway's point, it is something that, that's an area where we hope to realize some savings, Mr. Kim. But just like the route elimination for Route Number 511, looking at a slice of the total transportation plan without looking at the impact on the rest of the routes that those buses serve, we want to make sure that it's not going to have a negative impact on the other route. So, I do expect us to realize some savings. I don't even want to put an exact dollar amount there at this point in time until we have a chance to do that cost benefit analysis.
All right. Now, item seven, it says the seven students, et cetera. It didn't say eliminate a bus. It says that Route Number 511 being transferred to another route, and that savings will be $35,972 according to page 17. And yet, over here, right inside the route, item seven, it says no cost benefit at this time. What the report's telling us, there's $35,972 to be saved.
I think that's saying that Rockville High, they don't want to eliminate that bus, therefore, there's no savings. But I don't know why they don't want to eliminate that.
Through the chair. When we met with the bus company, we had the same question, we obviously thought there might be some low-hanging proof, make an easy change to the route, but it's not. And when we looked at the entire route itself, displacing those students, they would have to go on other buses, and it would in fact move the total cost from the time of those buses later than what we currently budgeted for. So, there was no net savings. If you just look at that one slice, you might be able to say that, and that's what the consultant did, but you have to look at the entire impact displacing the students or eliminating that route altogether, and there was no cost benefit to doing so. And we did bet that, pushed hard with the bus company with our transportation coordinator, and we just couldn't find it in the savings.
Let me ask you a question about spending money. There was a reference in the report, I forgot what page it's on, suggesting we employ the services of CPA to more effectively identify costs that we could be applying. So, what is our position about hiring a CPA to help us on a temporary basis addressing those savings?
If I recall through the chair, the recommendation from Futures Education was to consider hiring a CPA to budget forecasting, and then they provided themselves as a reference to providing those services. The, if you look under item number 10, there's a discussion there about what our plan is for moving forward. I actually think that's probably one of Mr. Roy's recommendations in moving forward when addressing some of our special education budget shortfall, in that we've already, we've already changed our approach to how we budget for special education services. Rather than taking that snapshot in time, we are now looking at our actual experiences based on prior fiscal years and budgeting accordingly to those trends and to those actual expenditures versus a snapshot in time. So, that's a change that we've already made. I think that's going to help us move forward, but I would recommend to the Board at this point in time that we need to hire a CPA or Futures for that capacity to do that. I think we're making the necessary change and course correction there.
At what point would you recommend that we do that?
I wouldn't at this point in time.
Oh, I would.
I think that there might be some value in looking at that if we continue to have negative budget experiences in our special ed accounts, but I think the way we're doing it will show some improvement.
All right. Thank you.
Point of order. We have a curfew at 10 o'clock. We need to extend the order. I'd make caution that we extend so we complete our business at 10:00.
Second. Any discussion or comments? Mr. Stansfield.
Just like to point out that this is the second meeting in a row we've had to do this, and I have to wonder about the construction of the agenda and whether we might take a look in the future about how many presentations we're receiving in a single evening and perhaps spacing those out a little better so that we're not overwhelmed like we have been.
I think for this meeting, the problem is that we had canceled our last meeting, so that our conference is the problem for this evening, but it's just my comment. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Kim.
There's somewhere in here.
No, we're voting on it. We're just moving motion on the floor to extend the meeting.
Oh, sorry.
Any other comments on that? Questions? All those in favor? And opposed? Mr. Stansfield, any questions? Okay. You may continue, Mr. Kim.
Well, I'm looking for the exact words in here. I thought I had it highlighted, but I lost it. But it was a reflection of over the amount of spending that the special ed shortfall consisted of, and it projects that we will have a similar shortfall again this year.
For this kind of year?
Yeah. So, the larger question is, what do we expect next time?
Mr. Picaro.
Certainly, through the chair. Yep, and then, again, just to go back to the budget forecasting, we've already implemented that. We may, of course, correction. Again, the traditional model of taking a snapshot in time, we found that not to be as effective as looking at our actual experiences and what our trends have been in prior fiscal years. And so, we've already made that change moving into fiscal year 15. For the current fiscal year, we are experiencing a budget shortfall in those accounts. It's reflected in our year-to-date. We discussed it. It's a driver in our budget freeze, and that's part of what we're trying to address in the budget freeze to begin this fiscal year. So, yes, we expect a shortfall in the account for this year, and we're addressing it through the budget freeze. And moving forward, we've changed our forecasting model. We base our budget using that model for next year.
Any other questions, Mr. Kim? Are you still?
I'm sorry.
Well, you still have the floor. Do you have any other questions?
Well, I'm on the floor.
Okay. Mr. Felina.
With some forty, I don't know if it's definitely on the spreadsheet. Some are in progress, some have some dates on them, others TBD or not applicable, et cetera. Is there any value in the Board of Education establishing some sort of priority amongst those that are currently in progress? Would that be of some value, or is that just more a hindrance considering maybe a lack of personnel in some cases to move forward at this particular juncture? Would that be of some help to the administration?
That's entirely up to the Board. That's why I wasn't sure where you were going to go with this tonight, whether you wanted just to report quarterly, or you wanted to identify those areas that you thought we should take action in. I wasn't, we were asked to provide all of the, what we thought.
Yeah, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of data to digest, and I'm not sure if it may be consistent or informed, but certainly, I mean, you know, I think, obviously, direction by the Board might be helpful. I just don't know if, you don't know what our desires are in this regard, or it's just, you know, you're digesting information right now.
Do you have some suggestions?
No, I won't. No, I just tried to approach the subject so that we could, so we should move.
Thank you. Mr. Felina.
To Mr. Felina's point, I think the administration really needs to continue to digest what has been reported here. I mean, they've had just under a month to kind of go through, try to put together a frame for going after the low-hanging fruit, but it's going to take a little bit more time to actually implement something that's, you know, can be actionable on all of those items. I would expect someone to provide me a report, just we're going to try to do everything on that report. We've got to make sure it makes sense. Mr. Picaro indicated that they're doing cost benefit analysis. We've got to check the figures of consultants, make sure they think that up. I think it makes sense to give the administration more time to continue to go through this report and continue to, you know, shape what their takeaways are from this and report back to us. I think to ask for a report back here, you know, even as early as next month, a follow-up would be appropriate, but I think, you know, they really have to do that work. And I don't know that we'd be doing them any justice by saying focus only on this, because they may be able to give us some other benefit.
Did the chair members want? Yeah, I agree with you totally. I just was trying to frame it so that we have some kind of expectation as to how we should be moving forward. And right now, I'm not sure there's any kind of consensus, so I was just trying to move that over at this point.
I think if I remember correctly, the motion was to prioritize, to give the Board some idea of how you wanted to, what you wanted to focus on, and I didn't see that either, only if I was to interpret the definitions under action. Maybe that's supposed to be some kind of prioritizing, but I believe if you double-check the motion, requested priorities as well. I wonder why in item number 17, that the implementation is for 2015, when we're simply asking for participation in IEDPs. I'm wondering if you can explain to me why it will be delayed for that long.
That's this coming fall, because it's fiscal year 2015.
It's the fall, fiscal year 2015, it's September 1st.
So, we can, we can expect that that principal will take on some responsibilities for IEDPs?
Excellent.
Okay.
One last question. With regard to page 11, Educational Services Analysis for VPS, it, one of the items says, "Help provide a platform for north concerned bring-back program of students currently in out-of-district placements." Please clarify what is meant by a platform? I'm not sure what that really means.
I would need to get some more information from consultants. I'm not exactly sure what they need either, so I will ask for more information. I think that our bring-back rate is pretty good right at the moment. We will continue to take one at a time and take a look at that. We actually do have a department meeting where we review the students that are outplaced and consider who can be brought back, so I can see if they have other ideas about that. I think that was one of the things that they actually talked about, that we were able to create such a wide range of programs, and, you know, in our discussions, they felt like that was a positive trend.
All right, it'll be interesting to hear what the reasons for all of that question are. Thank you.
Any more?
I think it's important to request regular feedback on this because I don't, again, I'm still concerned about getting a bang for the dollars that the Board committed to this. So, I want it to be, I'm not suggesting that you'll set it aside. I'm suggesting that it needs to be put in front of us on a regular basis. So, I don't see anything wrong with asking for a month from now to give us an update on what you're doing and to please include priorities to be determined. In my opinion, it doesn't mean that's when the action is going to take place. It means are you giving a consideration and do you have a plan? So, I move that the administration report back to the Board one month from now on. The changes made to the action plan matrix.
Mr. Stansfield. Any discussion or comments? Mr. Kim?
With regard to the one-month timeframe, is, I understand the intent of the motion. I just want to clarify if the timeline needs to be altered at all. Can one month, can this be done in one month? Can this be done effectively in one month, or would a different timeframe be?
I think you're asking for. I think you clarified the motion there. I was not looking for end results. I'm looking for what took place over the course of the month relative to the matrix and just to continue to report that. It's just your practice.
I'm just asking the question. Is getting that information achievable in one month?
Or are we on the practice that we made in a month? I think the indicators, the recommendations.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motions? All those in favor? To your next question. Okay. Moving on to item 8.3, discussion of the White House District Championship. I think the only thing, it gets just very quickly, two, not this past meeting, but the meeting before, they shared with us seven conditions for productive change, and they said every time we prepare and we should be looking at our agenda, make sure that the things on the agenda line up with at least one of these seven items. One, the connections across the system. Two, knowing what it takes to change achievement. Three, workplace support. Four, professional development. Five, a balance between district point direction and building level autonomy, strong community connection, and distributed leadership. That was from two meetings ago. And then, the last one we had was all about data and how we interpret data. That was very informative, and it just led for more questions for most of us, but it was very important about how you have to have many data points before you can make decisions in terms of what's going to improve achievement in the system. So, I don't know if anyone wants to add anything.
And to your point, I think one of the reasons to ask for regular updates is providing data so that the Board can stay, be sure that we are aligned with the goals that we have. So, it's not make work for administration. I think it's an effort to gather data so that we can make decisions and move forward. And regular data, not just dumping of data per subject matter, but data that we can use regularly for all decision-making. So, I think it's important that we start putting into practice what we all agreed was important to our function and just ask and continue to ask for data on a regular basis.
Nobody else have anything to add in regards to our last workups? Okay. Move on to item 8.4, Facilities Community Report. Mr. Kim?
There were nine items discussed, and one of which was a PMBC report on some of our schools, not all, Center Road, Rockville High School, and Maple Street, and each of the items that were open basically have been cleared, with the one exception of Maple Street, which is some painting being done at an entrance, which is an open item, and some replacement of things around, some flooring, which will be done this summer. The largest item really that's out there is trying to deal with the discoloration of the outside of Center Road School. There's a study that's going to be done to determine what it would cost to mitigate that. It's more of a problem, you don't just paint it or blast it away. It's more of a structural problem that causes that kind of discoloration on the outside. That's the only thing that could get expensive, but we don't know how much at this point in time. The other items in the, in the meeting consisted of some memorials that have been requested that VCMAS Northeast requested at VCMAS, Northeast Center Road and Skinner. And we basically said that you may put a bench up so long as you scope out the cost of it, and it's in compliance with the, not only Parks and Rec, but helping with the principal. And as long as the memorial is neutral, like, you know, religious connotations attached to it or symbols of any kind, then for the most part, those would be approved. One of the other items was a discussion of parking and traffic issues, et cetera, at school. I don't know that we have a solution for that. It just seems to be a problem. Part of the discussion would be, could we put an access road around the back of Center Road School and an exit out of West Street? There's some pluses and minuses to all of that, but there's not a real good traffic flow at Center Road. And I think I've covered everything. And finally, the Red Cross agreement was signed by the town, which allows VCMAS to be utilized as a regional shelter. And that was done in the past and may be done in the future. You'll recall that the generator is now available at VCMAS to do more than convenience lighting. It would actually generate enough power to light the place effectively when it's used as a shelter. So that was signed recently. And that's it. So unless you have any questions or Mr. Picaro wants to acknowledge any of this, that's it.
If I may, to the chair, we do have the capital non-recurring request for funding for the track and tennis courts.
Yep, we do. That was in the very beginning. We need to make, yep. Okay, so I'll make a motion to, thank you for reminding me, I'd like to move approval of the, at the board of bid, request $16,000 for track and tennis court repair come out of the capital non-recurring fund, first you and second. Second.
Any questions? Question? Mr. Stanwell?
Through the chair, Mr. Picaro, what is the current balance of the capital non-recurring? Through the chair, the current balance is $83,633.20. That reflects the $50,000 reduction in the safety process to school project that was recently approved by the board.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Kim?
Just wondering if the track and the tennis courts are not usable?
They're usable, yeah.
Are they a safety, are they a safety?
It's not so much a safety thing. In my personal, it's more of a, you better do it or you wish you did. You've got to get in front of the spiraling, which is, we're all familiar with. Those are as well. That's what the partner has.
Oh, thanks, one for the question. Oh, through the chair. There are a few issues in the tennis courts where the cracks, there are cracks that could be tripping hazards. And as Mr. Kim stated, in the tennis courts, that has the cracks that, the track has the spiraling or the webbing effect that if we don't get ahead of it, it's just going, it's going to go to a point to where it's not repairable. That would be a much more expensive project.
You said the magic words, Mr. Kim. Okay. Any other questions? Questions from Mr. Kim? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to, yes, Mr. Kim, to ask the town for $16,000 for capital non-recurring to create. All those in favor? Mr. Nance? Okay, now we'll move on to item 8.5. Finance, please.
To the chair, Mr. Burt told me I better give the clip notes where Mr. Ross. I will, I will hit the highlights and send the open up for questions. It is quite a full report. We'll start with the appropriation center, which I think will be nicely into our budget worksheet. As you know, the town has approved our appropriation, Exhibit A, the amount, total amount of funding of $51,9291,956, an increase of $797,169, a 1.58% increase. Of that amount, the board is still, has $312,792 and unassigned adjustments to the budget, reductions to the budget that needs to be made. So included in the board, a packet of the next agenda, more some proposed areas where we can make reductions from the administration that we look forward to discussing, potentially take, hopefully take action on this evening. Other quick highlights in the business and finance report, there's a health insurance update we have signed, a combined health insurance plan for fiscal year 15 with the town. That's reflected in the report. Uniform charge of accounts, we are moving forward, the state is mandating it. We discussed in finance committee what that would look like, and that Burningwood participated as one of the pilot school districts in the rollout of uniform charge of accounts starting in the summer. It's a mapping solution, so while we expect a minimum impact on the change of our process, it will be somewhat part of the soft costs involved with that mapping solution initially to get the two different accounts to jive. Under the fiscal year 14 budget updates, our executive summary account balances included in there, of which the capital non-recurring educational fund balance is in there as well. There's a series of budget transfers that are included in your handout with one budget amendment that we discussed in the finance committee meeting and we respectfully withdraw from action from the board. The simple fact that when we looked at it, the amendment request was to transfer $142 to support the liability insurance for our food service trailer, but as discussed, those funds will come from our school use account and revenues generated to support the trailer. So not a lot of money in principle in every little accounts, we decided not to take action on that. The rest of them are transfers, which I'll be happy to answer questions on. Also, briefly, there's a fiscal year procedure minimum that went out to the district stating that the fiscal year essentially closes for purchases on May 23rd, and we're doing that earlier than we did last year so that we will be able to report in the next finance committee meeting or two, a clearer picture of how we anticipate ending the fiscal year before the fiscal year ended. So that'll give us time to make, to take action as needed. Student account balances, I think it's worth mentioning, our food and nutrition services, that we've done our due diligence and we discussed that, what that means in detail in the finance committee, to recoup some of the costs involved with some of the students and families that have mounted, staying current with their account balances in the cafeteria lines. There is a total of about $4,500 in fees that we still need to collect to close out the fiscal year for our food and nutrition services. It's spread out over small amounts, over quite a bit of families, and we're aggressively reaching out every way possible, email, phone calls, certified letters, letters in students' backpack, working with the school principals. But there are a handful of students and families, about 20, where the account balances are over $50 and much higher, that we're at a point now where those students would be receiving an alternative meal in the food line because those account balances haven't been addressed in any way, shape, or form. And again, in addition to all those ways of reaching out, we also try to work out payment plans with families, and there's a handful that just have not responded in any positive way. So those, those students would be getting an alternative meal over the next couple of weeks if, if the third certified letter is not responding to in time and manner. Other quick highlights in here, we discussed, Mr. Kim discussed the West Main Street Bridge project that's going on, the school security grant. We purchased a panic alarm system and quite a bit of work has to go into the policy and procedures of implementing that. We've talked a little bit about the heating costs and how this winter's been an unusual winter. It's certainly been one of our budget busters for this year. We're anticipating by the end of the fiscal year to be over about $80,000 in our heating oil account. Obviously, we're not, the other districts experiencing that, most are, which has been a difficult turn. Competitive bids, we awarded the student information system contract, that was negotiated. Copy of the first few pages of that award, including the budget are included for your reference. There were two public bidding openings in addition to the CNC router bid for the STEM lab at the high school. That's in the process of being reviewed and the word will follow. And then the student assessment RFI was issued, in which an RFP will be going out in the streets tomorrow as a follow-up to that request for information. Other folks have had a chance to digest what they've learned from that RFI. And then somewhat along those lines, we've been working with CRAC in regards to the board's desire to look for solutions, potential solutions to our substitute services. And at the meeting tomorrow, CRAC, I will have more information to share at the next board meeting about a possible regional solution to bidding out those services. All those are the highlights in the chair.
Does anybody have any questions for Michael? Okay, move on to item 8.5A, which is the 2014-15 budget regulations.
I'm going to ask Mr. Picaro through these. However, if you look at the attached worksheet, the last section, others for discussion, are the suggestions from administration. The first one I'd like to note, however, is the health insurance broker services. That was a suggestion from Mayor Champagne that is one of the areas that could be cut, but also one of the three areas that he asked the board to consolidate services with the town. So it would be my assumption that if the board does cut that, then you are saying we are consolidating broker services with the town. Otherwise, we can't cut the $60,000. We would remain certainly with our broker. But so, and that was a conversation you had, you wanted to make sure that it was a real savings and that the services that we were getting through, through our broker could be had through the town's broker. And they had promised that they were, they're going to sub it out, our retiree services and a few things, but, but we are getting those services next year. And so it is a real savings of $60,000, but my assumption again would be that if the board does take that, then that is consolidating those services with, with the town. And it seems that that was your intention in that conversation, a month or two months, about whatever it was, February.
I'll go along with, I'll go along with this for the time being, but I sure want to find out after a year or so if you feel it turned out to be to our benefit or detriment one way or the other. So just because we do that and we consolidate, that doesn't mean the whole rest of our natural lives, that can be changed in any fiscal year. They might not like that, but that doesn't mean that we're committing to this forever. So that's, when I vote to approve taking that cut, that's what's in the back of my mind.
I was, I was going to ask that of Mr. Picaro, if it's on this list, can I assume that, that you're supportive of combining broker services into Mr. Kim's point, that it's a one-time deal until we're faced with the same issue?
Through the chair, I'm comfortable with the consolidation now that we received the assurances from the town, that the broker services that we would be consolidating with, that would be from our current broker, round and round to Ovation, would be able to meet the same, our needs basically for a couple of particular areas. One is our retiree benefit program that's currently provided through our broker services at no additional charge. That's a key one for us. And we've just had very good customer service from Round and Round, so we want that to continue with the new broker services. So we need to meet and we need to discuss that in more detail with the town, but they have given us the assurance that, that that would occur. Also, let me know to Mr. Kim's point, our contract is up with Round and Round at the end of this fiscal year. The contract that the town currently has in place that we would consolidate to is proposed and at the end of next fiscal year. So it would just be a one-year commitment. And then together, you know, we can either look at going out to bid jointly or making a decision at that point in time separate from 15.
I'd actually like to make a formal motion from this board that we consolidate those services for a period of one year on a trial basis and that we revisit that at the end of the year and let the town know that this is a one-year commitment and leave it at that until next year. So I'd put down a formal motion.
Discussion, Mr. Green?
I suggest a friendly amendment that you include the $60,000 reduction in your motion, that it's a one-time reduction based on.
I'd accept a friendly amendment in the second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Yes. Okay. Anything else on the list here people would like to discuss or make motions?
Does, does Mr. Picaro have anything that he wants to put out there in front of us on these before we?
Through the chair, the $128,580 essentially is a washboard, so I think that's worth noting. I think that, I'm sorry, I think that's worth noting with the simple fact that the, that amount of money is the exact amount of money that's now from our student-based supplement grant that's been combined in our special education excess cost grant, which is now in one payment that goes to the town and the intended board to go to the board. So the reduction in our special ed account by that amount of money is presented would be recouped in grant funding that would come from, from the State Department of Education next fiscal year. The very great fee of the magnet school tuition, we felt comfortable in conversations with Mr. Burt, going an extra $10,000. Our current trends are showing that students are staying in district and are coming back to district. And I know Mr. Burt will have more to share about that if needed, but the bottom line is we feel comfortable taking that $10,000 risk in that account for next fiscal year. Math curriculum development, that was an easy cut. It was essentially a renegotiation of the contract, so there was no, that there's no cut to actual materials that would be purchased in that line. It's simply renegotiating contracts, so that would be an easy one. Computer hardware, that $80,100 from 57710 from the central administration account is actually comprised of three separate items, the smart boards, the LCD projectors, and some document cameras in there. And so combined, because it's a total of $80,100. I think it's worth noting that some of that equipment, the core capacity of that equipment was built into the Alliance District Grant, so this would be additional equipment that would enhance the capacity for the school district. So while it's not an easy cut to make or suggestion to make to the board to take action on, it's certainly one that would not eliminate the impact capacity for next fiscal year. And then the last one, $28,112, essentially is a balance to get us to the, to the total reduction of 312, 792, we felt would be doable within our projected vacancy rate. And very briefly, with a payroll of close to 700 plus employees, part-time, full-time, and seasonal employees, it's inevitable that some employees will retire and that some employees will move on to, to other positions. And so there's always going to be that gap in between when the employee leaves and when the next employee comes on. So we felt comfortable, based on our prior year's experience, that we could make up for that in projected vacancy rate.
I'd make the motion that the board accept the administration's recommendations on the student-based supplement grant for $128,580, magnet school tuition for $10,000, math curriculum development for $6,000, computer hardware for $80,100, and the projected vacancy rate, $28,112.
Any other second, Mr. Kim? Any discussion? Mrs. Iger?
Can we move to divide the question, please?
Is there a second? One second to divide.
I would prefer to take, to take each of the recommendations individually because there may be, like, in my case, I would be forced to go, no, because there's something I'm very hot to discuss. That's all.
Okay. All those in favor of dividing the motion? Okay. We have a motion on the floor to reduce our budget with the last one, two, three, four, five items on this recommendation.
A speech of motion on the floor, then I, I find that I certainly know, I'm not any wiser about these things than Mr. Picaro. I think it's just a, we parlayed on inner philosophy, that's all it is. So I'm hard-pressed to support reducing the computer hardware because it seems we always go to those big items and we take a step backwards. My suggestion would be to replace. My suggestion would be to replace the computer hardware with another, probably equally distasteful reduction, but in terms of the painter, the benefits and supplies. So leaving our computer hardware intact and considering we're moving the painter, the benefits, and supplies for $80,100. We've been without a painter so long, once another year. But that would be, I'm not going to support, I'm not going to support the motion because I feel very strongly about leaving our commitment to technology in place.
Anybody have any further comments? Okay, there is a motion on the floor. All of us in favor? Motion carries. Now, item 8.6, reports from both their liaisons. All I just want to say is that Sanlo School is now working with SafeLoots to schools because they do have such a traffic. So hopefully, maybe someday they'll get a grant like Skid Row School did and make some improvements up. And if anybody else has anything?
Okay, I attended the key board director's meeting and there's a couple of key things that I think would interest Vernon. One of the big things is the special ed tiered cost was voted down. They're really planning on revisiting it next year. It would increase the money we'd be getting for special ed reimbursement. So it's something we need to promote in our legislators to make sure this does go through in the future. They're going to be adding additional seats for pre-K as a competitive grant, so it's not just the big five that are getting these seats, really important. Another thing is they're going to be adding $22 million in security bond funding. We already have ours, but that's also out there. There's just going to be a legislative update on May 13th. You can get that on the K meeting, the K website. There's also a webinar on school governance councils on May 20th. And the date for the summer leadership program, our summer leadership conference is July 22nd.
I have a question for Laura. Is there anything about pre-K requirements? Is that going away or are they still wanting to? Is the State Department of Ed still pushing to have us pay for pre-K?
At this time, no, we are not paying for pre-K. And they don't, we don't see that coming down the road. But they are pushing to get additional seats in districts without, in the districts and not just in the magnet school program. So we're looking, that we'll be getting more seats and hopefully it will be funded through state. And that's what they're really pushing for.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. No other reports? Okay, now, 8.7 and 8.8 are executive session. We want to do the nine and 10 second committee.
I know we have to do.
Yeah, there are some comments on the other side. I make a motion that we go into executive session after, to discuss item 8.7 and 8.8 after 9.0 and 10.0 are completed.
Second? Okay, so now we're doing item 9.0 to review and update the board of education ballot. Does anybody have anything left?
Now that the board has identified June 16 as the graduation date, that's the last house training. So the two dates that the team has offered are the 11th and the 17th. I have heard from four board members, but I'm hoping to hear a few others.
11th and 17th. Please email their address. Okay, I do 10.0, opportunity for questions from the president of the board. All right, now we will move into executive session for 8.7 and 8.9. Mr. Picaro and Mrs. Carr.
It won't take them long.
You never know, could be another hour.
They're poof.
It's going to take me about 45 minutes to get this up ready. And then turn on the stage and then Picaro's coming tomorrow. I might take a minute to get out. Paul, let me turn the mic off.